Good afternoon, calling the February 14, 2017 study session to order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Avery is currently absent.
Thank you. I'm sure he was just running a little late. Current business.
First item is clarification of items on the consent calendar.
Thank you. Any questions on the consent calendar from the dais? All right, seeing none. Item number two, we have a presentation from the Orange County Human Relations Commission, Dr. K. Reynolds. Dr. Reynolds, would you please come forward to the podium? Afternoon.
Hi.
Thank you for joining us today.
You're welcome. As a new Orange County Commissioner, I'm proud that one of my first duties is to address my home council members. I've been a resident of Newport Beach for almost 40 years, so this is nice that one of my first duties is to address all of you. Some of you are good friends, too. I'm here today to report on the works of the nonprofit arm of the Orange County Human Relations Commission. It was developed many years ago because the funding was so low that the commission felt it needed to generate some more funds to do all that they wanted to do. So this nonprofit organization is an arm of the commission. Over the last year, we've done a lot of things in Orange County in coordination with the City of Newport Beach, and there is a pamphlet in front of you. Do all of you have a copy of that?
We do.
Okay. That's the full report, and I'm just going to give you an overlook and peruse that more detailed copy. First of all, let me tell you what the commission stands for. The commission believes that all people have a right to live free from discrimination and violence, so the commission provides programs to create safe and respectful communities. The Orange County Human Relations partners with cities in Orange County to manage challenging issues such as the lack of civil discourse, meaningful participation in all residents in the critical decision-making, and overcoming the mistrust that can make every police and community encounter possibly more dangerous for both parties. And I think we can see that some of the violence towards the police has excelled exponentially in the last year or two, and we don't like to see that. Many of our programs are provided countywide, but I'd like to share the following information about our programs that are exclusively in Newport Beach. Here goes. There's a lot of statistics, so I'm going to have to read through this, so bear with me. Hi, Mr. Kiff. We have mediated 90 cases as well as 22 family mediations in the courts or the community where one of the parties was a resident of the City of Newport Beach. And for your information, I didn't know this, so I'm thinking maybe you don't either. The county provides free or low-cost mediation services for low-income families. And like I said, I had not known that, and I kind of wondered about the use of private and public funds to that end. But after I investigated the data on the mediation services, I could see that it was extremely beneficial. Let me share with you what that mediation process does. It protects children from abuse in the home. It prevents restraining orders and police involvement. No police like to go to domestic violence scene. Isn't that right? I saw some policemen back there. That's the last thing on their agenda that they want to go to, is a domestic violence scene. It also saves an abuser in the home from going to jail. And in the best of circumstances, it can resolve or heal a marriage problem, and then the mediation for divorce is not needed. So that's the best outcome. But when I saw the amount of good that this does, I decided that this free mediation was a very helpful thing and was definitely worth the money. In collaboration with the Newport Beach Police on Hate Crimes and Individuals or Community Groups on Hate Incidents, and we documented five hate crimes in Newport Beach in 2016. The committee also conducted one police or community reconciliation case. 1,129 Newport youth participated in our Bridges Violence Prevention Program, learning to create safe, inclusive school climates. Three Newport youth participated in the year-long Human Relations Internship. Twenty Newport Beach youth participated in the day-long Walk in My Shoes Symposium in UC Irvine or Cal State Fullerton. They learned about respect, tolerance, leadership, making a difference in their schools and The commission worked to build a sense of community among Newport Beach residents and staff through hate crime victim outreach and support, as well as providing a series of restorative justice circles, mediations, and trainings for Newport Harbor students, teachers, and staff in the aftermath of political clashes that disrupted the school between April and June of 2016. You may remember those. There was some political involvement there. In conclusion, I told you this would be brief. Orange County Human Relations has partnered with City of Newport Beach over the last 25 years for these purposes: to bring the police and diverse residents together in building safe, respectful neighborhoods; to develop positive relations among the broad spectrum of Newport Beach residents; to address community conflict and strife; to sustain a human relations infrastructure that serves cities when crisis situations occur. I'd say that just as important as the infrastructure of storm drains and things like that to the city is the human relations infrastructure of effective conflict resolution programs, trained professional staff, positive relationships with diverse communities that can be called upon at Orange County Human Relations. And that being said, the Human Relations Commission has been so delighted to be in partnership with the City of Newport Beach. We wanted to present the mayor with a recognition, a certificate of recognition, and I'll read it to you first, Mayor Muldoon.
Thank you.
The recognition certificate says, "Orange County Human Relations Commission recognizes the City of Newport Beach for its outstanding commitment to fostering mutual understanding among residents and eliminating prejudice, intolerance, and discrimination in order to make Orange County and Newport Beach a better place for all people to live, work, and do business." And it's signed by Rusty Kennedy, the CEO of Orange County Human Relations Commission.
Thank you. I'll beat you by the flags, and we'll do a quick photo op.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds, for your contribution to our city beforehand and now under physical capacity at the Orange County Human Relations Commission. We have one more presentation to give. This time, we will be honoring someone. I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Will O'Neill.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it's fun to have my first certificate go to Dean Zipser. So Dean is the founding partner at Umberg-Zipser, and he's brought his Valentine, his wife, Esti, and they have two sons, Bradley and Kevin, who are longtime Port Streets residents. And their certificate from the city is going to be recognizing the fact that Dean was recently, he recently received the Franklin G. West Award from the Orange County Bar Association, which is the Orange County Bar Association's highest honor and only goes to one person each year. Dean has built a career on advancing justice and the law. He's a former president of the Orange County Bar Association, a former president of the Association of Business Trial Lawyers, a founding member of the Orange County Federal Bar Association, the current vice president of the Constitutional Rights Foundation of Orange County, and co-vice chair of the California State Bar Rules Revision Commission. And that's actually a small list of the things that have brought recognition on Dean, and of course, he wouldn't be able to do any of that without Esti by his side. So we are going to be providing a certificate of recognition that states, "The City of Newport Beach recognizes Dean Zipser, recipient of the Franklin G. West Award, the Orange County Bar Association's highest honor for lifetime achievements that have advanced justice and the law." Dean will meet right over by the flag.
One, two.
Thank you. And Dean, if you wanted to say a couple of words at the podium, you're welcome to. Otherwise, we thank you for attending. I'm guessing that's a no. All right. All right, now to item three. I'm sorry, item four. Mr. Kiff, I believe you have a presentation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you. This is an opportunity to have a study session follow-ups from the planning session you held on January, on Saturday, January 14th. So we're going to do a couple of things, and certainly welcome your input and questions and comments at any time, and that is to review some of the projects within what's called the Facilities Financing Plan, and then to go over and ask for some additional direction from you on some of the other items that came up, such as an update to the city's general plan. In the event that you're comfortable moving forward with some of these projects or my recommendations on some of these projects, my recommendation to you is to send this to the Finance Committee, which would meet as early as this Thursday to review those in more detail and then to return to you. So let me start by just speaking about what the Facilities Financing Plan is. It is, we call it the FFP for short. Only the council can amend it, so you're going to look at what's kind of an older version of it, but it is the last version that the council saw. And then, as I noted, maybe give some guidance to the Finance Committee, and then they might return it to you for adoption, consideration and adoption. And I mentioned some of those other items that you discussed also on that Saturday. So let's talk a little bit about how the FFP works. It works with a combination of sources, of funding sources. One is developer contributions, and those were fairly dramatic in some years and headed downward and fairly small in other years. You could see our projected developer contributions in 2019 are almost nothing. And then the general fund typically fills that gap. And what this does is it, together with these sources of funds, it drives a revenue stream that allows us to build and repair, sorry, build new facilities over time. So I want to talk next about some of those facilities, and hopefully this is readable. This is an excerpt from the FFP, and it's quite a long list. I am highlighting these items because these are the items that I'm recommending there be some change on, and I'm going to talk about what those changes are in just a moment. So that's everything from the West Newport Community Center to the Fire Station Library in Coronet Omar, to the Newport Pier, to the Newport Junior Guard Headquarters, to Lower Castaways, and to the CYC in Grant Howell Park. I note that the items in green are not actually on the FFP, but I can't help but mention them because they're important expenditure. So the FFP is not a perfect document that covers everything, so, yes.
Let me ask a couple of questions just to help set the context that you're setting. This is the first time, and I'm aware, even though I've been on, this is the third year on the council, going into my third year, but we've never before been presented with recommendations that you are going to be presenting to defer, slow down, or cancel, so I'd like you to comment a little bit about that. And also, just going back to your chart, if you would, please go back to the bar graph, vertical bar graph. I think it's important for the community to understand that the green bar graph represented developer contributions that, for many decades, have provided significant financial resources to the infrastructure building in Newport Beach. And the general fund contributions are limited to between $5 and $8 million typically that has been funded in, from the general fund, from the, to the facilities financial fund. So I just really want to make the point, for the community's benefit, that as a city, we are very fortunate that we have had these funds that have funded every park, every Marina Park, Sunset View Park, Sunset Ridge Park, every park. There's some, 78 parks in the city have been funded with these funds. So going forward, and the reason why you're presenting this is that we have to set priorities. And life as we knew it is changing because of some other competing priorities, financial that you'll be talking about. So I just really wanted to set that context, and feel free to elaborate on what I've just said.
I appreciate that very much, Councilmember Dixon, and I really kind of dove into this without setting that context. Dan, if we could escape from this, I have a slide that's not part of that presentation. Could you hit the escape button? And then click on the thing that says untitled down there. And Leilani, maybe if you could bring the screen up. So this is in part why we're here. I've talked to the council, not to everybody in the audience, about the city's unfunded pension liability. You could see where it was in 2002. It almost isn't on the chart. And now, we're looking at about $315, $315 million. That is a heck of a lot of money, and that is at a certain discount rate that PERS uses. And PERS, right now, in the next 12 to 18 months, is looking at changing that discount rate, and probably very appropriately so. And remember, the discount rate, in a more layperson's term, is what PERS expects to earn from its investments, which include equities and stock market, sorry, and real estate investments and much more. And basically, if they say, you know what, we're probably not going to earn 7% anymore. We're probably going to earn something close to 6.25 or even 6%, this is what happens to the unfunded liability, and it goes up to $500 million. Actually, it's $497 or something like that. And I don't say this to scare you, but I do say this because it's a really sobering number. And when I try and solve this problem, I don't see a way to do it without significant changes in the way the city operates its business. So one of those significant things that I think we need to do is defer some of these projects. And I know the mayor mentioned that his first meeting in December, and I think he was right on in saying we need to really look at nice-to-haves and then focus as well on addressing the unfunded liability and then the must-haves. And some of the must-haves are seawalls and doing a better job protecting the community. So, Dan, you can go back to the presentation on this point, but that's really a lot of why we're here. And please know again, I don't have all the answers to how to address that amount of money, and it's a very challenging thing for our community, and you can imagine what it's going to be for all the other communities in California that are in worse shape. And I don't say we're in bad shape, but the City of Richmond, for instance, was just in the news that their problem is dramatically worse right now, today. And I just really worry how the, up and down the state, this is going to be addressed if the legislature and the governor don't step in.
Dave, I've got a couple of questions following up on Diane's comments. So if I understand it, the FFP went into effect in around 2008, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And since that time, the FFP has been using a pool of money that comprises general fund money plus developer fee money, correct? Okay. Do we separate out into different funds, the developer fee money versus the general fund money when we're paying for projects?
Dan will know more about that.
So general public benefit fees are all deposited into the general, into the general fund, I'm sorry, into the facilities financial fund, except for 2% that are directed to a cultural arts fund per council policy I-13.
Okay. And so, once the developer fee agreements go into the facilities financing fund, and then the general fund money goes into the facilities financing fund, we don't segregate those monies out, correct? They just become one big pool in order to use toward the FFP projects?
Except for any restricted developer fees, so parking lieu fees, for example, we would reserve those for park projects.
Okay. So when we're looking at, for example, this bar chart right in front of us, where it's showing the green bar and the blue bar, that shows us how much went into the FFP, but once it gets into the FFP, with the exception of the cultural arts and facilities fund and the restricted funds, that's all basically one fund from which we can then fund our facilities?
Correct.
Okay. So is it, I mean, is it fair to say then, since 2008, we have not built any project inside the city that did not use developer fee money?
Probably fair to say that if you're mixing them. Corona, sorry, Marina Park was part developer fee money, this project was part developer fee money. It all goes into the mix.
In some of the early years, we transferred some significant one-time transfers, let's say $10 million, to help seed the fund as well. So pick and choose who paid for that, whether it was developer fees, it's some combination of developer fees and general fund contributions.
Okay. And so to Diane's point, when she's, I'm sorry, to, when Dave, you were saying that we have a drop-off after 2019, any money that is going to be going to these facilities will be going out from the general fund, essentially?
Yes, unless, what we don't do here is directly program in unknowns, for instance, Uptown Newport, the completion of that, when, we have an idea when that will arrive, and that may change that bar chart in those out years and become a contribution for us.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
One follow-up question to Mr. O'Neill's questions, just again, to set the context, because I've just gone through in the last few years, learning all of this, and I've been, we're very fortunate, I feel very fortunate, to sit on a city council for a city that has been managing these revenue funds, these funds that come in and putting them to good use for the community. So I, people who have heard me speak about this know that I'm concerned about the path forward. And when I speak with other council members in other cities, I am immediately grateful that we've had these funds, because when you talk to other council people in Yorba Linda, where they do not have a $22 million hospitality tax, TOT tax, tax revenue source, and they don't have all the car dealerships that we have or the developer fees, we are in a very fortunate position because we do have a really solid revenue base. And also, one other context-setting comment. Mr. Webb, typically, as I've been following our capital spending, our capital investment plan, capital improvement plan over the last few years, we typically, the budget, the annual budget is approximately $60 to $68 million. Is that what we've been spending, or $50 to $65 million the last few years?
That's true, right, in the 60 to 60, 70.
And then to the general fund portion, the source of funds that come from the general fund is somewhere between $5 and $8 million.
Generally, we've been trying to get $5 million a year into the fund.
Right. So just again, to put a fine point on it, is that these external related funds from developer, other taxes, well, just developer fees, frankly, and some other grant money and county money and federal money perhaps are funding this, are being, the external funds are funding about $60 million of our capital improve, annual capital improvement plan. Is that generally correct?
Correct. About $5 million in general fund, gas tax, measure M, tight lines funds, other funds going there, CBG.
Right. Which the staff has been very aggressive over the years to seek. So anyway, context-setting, just to understand that we have been very fortunate with these external revenue sources, and a significant external revenue source is declining. So just, that's why we're talking about this today. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, continue on. The next slide looks a lot alike, but if you go to the far right-hand side, I'm making a recommendation to you for change, and I'll go through some of them. The West Newport Community Center, we would shelve that, basically, maybe revisit it in five or, in about five years, if indeed Banning Ranch, the status of that changes. Remember, that was in part tied to Banning Ranch. The Fire Station and Library in Coronet Omar, I was also recommending that that be shelved, even as far along as the design is. The Fire Station number two near Lido, I'm not recommending that be shelved. I know your council will be talking about, in closed session, different properties that might be a site for that library, for that fire station. That's an important fire station to redo right now, so I'm not recommending that that be changed. There's a couple of other projects on there I'm recommending, we just say that, you know, we're going to aggressively try to get grants for versus any additional city contribution. That's the Ped Bridges near Sunset View Park. Looks like that's on there twice, I apologize. Let me jump down to Newport Pier. I know this is a sensitive one for everybody, because we'd love to do something at the end of the pier. I'm making a recommendation that you not move forward with the restaurant project, in part because of the way, respectfully, those negotiations have been going. The city might, is likely to be in charge of paying for the entire construction of the restaurant shell. Might be a great deal. When I pencil it out, it's a little bit less so. I have a slide on that in just a moment. Couple of other things that are on there that are important to people, the Newport Junior Guard Headquarters, that's a wonderful project, but I think we should try to see if there are enough folks in the community that might want to donate to that. And I know some folks are in the audience who are spearheading that, and it's a terrific effort. And then a couple of the others, Library Lecture Auditorium, I didn't want to presuppose that you're having a study session presentation at next meeting on that item, so I'd certainly welcome any questions you have on this. There's one of them, the Corpier merger, that if you ask a question about, I have to step out, because I have a financial, my partner has a financial interest too close to it. Any questions about this list? Mr. O'Neill? Sorry.
All right. You know what? No.
Okay.
I'll pass it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Kiff, are you actually looking for feedback from us on this, whether you want a thumbs up, thumbs down on these items?
You don't need to do that, although that's helpful. Again, my hope is that you would send this to the Finance Committee, and they would come back with additional recommendations, although I know they would welcome your input at any time, including now.
Mr. Piattar, to answer your question, I am of the school of thought that we should a couple of these, just not even hand to Finance Committee, we should direct staff this afternoon, with some of the more delicate ones involving opportunity to generate more revenue, like what Councilwoman Dixon's interested in going to Finance Committee. So I'll be voicing my opinion on some of these. So, I'll be voicing my opinion on some of these.
You know, actually, I'm sorry, I do have a question. On, I know, I know there are a few people in the audience on the CDM library, and I've listened to a lot of the presentations at the city council level in years past. It's not so much my question about the library, it's so much, it's the fire station. So, I know initially, that fire station replacement was the impetus behind doing the redesign, and so, if we're looking at, yeah, I mean, if the recommendation is to, if the recommendation is to revisit, what does that do for the fire station?
So, the fire station is ready to be redone, but it's functioning, and I think we could, I was out there today, just to, just to make sure I could say this, stand on two feet and say it, it's functioning, it's, we're holding it up pretty well, thanks to the good staff in fire to keep the HVAC working and the building functioning. So, I do think we could wait a little bit, especially if Fire Station Two might be a higher priority in light of its situation next to the hotel, and I think, to me, it has, it has more challenging, a more challenging need right now to be replaced than Fire Station Number Five.
Okay. And we received a couple of comments from folks in the community, hoping that we weren't going to be selling that property. We're not selling that property for the Corona Del Mar Library, correct?
That is not a proposal that I've been following or putting forth, no.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Hurdman. Dave, could you, or either Dave, could you provide some clarification on the difference between Pier Option One and Option Two on Newport Pier?
We have a couple of slides on that, so I can keep going.
Okay. Any other questions about this page?
Before you do, Councilwoman Dixon.
Let me get my mic on. I have a different chart here, but on the CDM, you say revisit it in five years. We've heard from some members of the community in Corona Del Mar, particularly those who have been strong advocates for the library project, that if we defer the construction of a new library and fire station, is there an interim improvement program that would not involve tearing down walls, but more to spiff up the library and the fire station with cosmetic changes, maybe improve the restrooms and that type of thing? Do you see that within the realm of possibility, as opposed to just pushing it all away for five years?
Certainly within the realm of possibilities, and I would talk to Dave Webb about that and see if there was a freshening up plan that might work. You folks, your council have another fund called the Facilities Maintenance Fund, which is for, just for things like this.
Mr. Mayor, one more.
Yes, Mr. O'Neal.
Thank you. So, if we have a facilities financing, Dan, how much money is in the facilities financing fund right now? Let's put it this way, the CAFR we just received, the ending balance as of June of 16, June 30th of 16, was 17.7 million. Have we, is it down, up, since then? Let's just-
That's a fair representation of the balance at the beginning of the year, and I don't believe we have any significant expenditures that are FFP-related in 17.
Million dollars.
Uh, Dave informed me about a million dollars committed to the Mariners' fire station.
Got it. Okay. By the way, I do enjoy hearing a baby while we're talking about the library. That's awesome. So, the, what I, my understanding is legally, there is a time requirement within which to spend public benefit fees, am I right?
That is correct.
So, Dave, what does that do for us when we're talking about a $17.7 million fund that has a burning amount of time within which to spend if we're going to be pushing some of these projects out?
Well, a couple of them, like the Lido Fire Station, we'd have to check the specific calendar, but there's a couple of them that I'm recommending that we would continue forward on, that I think could effectively use those funds.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pieter.
I'm sorry, clarify that, do we actually have funds that we have to use, or we lose them, in that?
So, some of the developer fees have a requirement to be spent down within five We would have to do a very specific accounting to identify, did we use developer funds first, or did we use general funds first?
We use developer funds first, of course.
Of course. We, that's the typical thing, we'd start with the most restrictive funds, spend those down first.
And those funds-
The park and loo funds don't have a specific timeline.
Right. And affordable housing funds likewise, it's-
Correct.
It's developer agreements, where we have gotten an extraordinary payment from a developer in exchange for the rights to develop, and those are restricted by time, and they also are restricted by what we can spend them on?
I may have to ask the Community Development Director, you made a good point that these are developer agreement fees, which may be held to a different standard?
Good afternoon, Kim Brandt, Community Development Director. So, development agreement fees, or the development agreement process allows the city to impose fees or gain fees from a developer, that's not normally required through the entitlement, the zoning entitlement process, and we have termed those as public benefit fees. So, those fees are generally at the council's discretion for expenditure, and unless they're restricted by some way through the development agreement, generally, they are at the council's disposal, and as Dan mentioned earlier, 2% of those fees are being set aside for cultural facilities or cultural arts programs, but at this point, there are, to my knowledge, no other use restriction on those fees or a timeline.
So, Dan, I guess the question is, are there actually restricted funds then in the FFP? I mean, we're talking not park fees-
Their restrictions are affordable housing fees, this is FFP fee. Right. So, the general public benefit fee with clarification from Director Brandt, doesn't appear that there is a five-year spend-down requirement.
Okay. That's helpful.
All right, Mr. Kiff, you're back up.
Okay. Thank you. So, we're going to talk a little bit more about some of the projects, and hopefully, and I may have Dave chime in on some of these, and then hopefully addressing Mr. Hurdman's question, too. So, this is the Fire Station Five with the Branch Library replacement. We, the current status, we've been holding this rather than to put it out to bid a second time. Recall that the bids came in a little higher, about $800,000 higher than we had hoped back in fall of 2016. This is more about the Lido Fire Station Number Two replacement. We do need to, we'd like to start this project. We're in concept development, and the thing that's most in play in this is, what's the best site for this? This is an okay site where it's at now, and just for the public at home, this is by the Old City Hall on 32nd Street, coming off of Lido Isle, and coming onto the peninsula before Newport Boulevard. It's not a great spot to turn around the big ladder truck that's there, so we'd like a space with a little bit better turnaround. So, a little bit more about the Junior Guard Facility. This is new, it's, this is requested in part by the parents, the Junior Guard Foundation. We've done a concept development, and I'm going to show that to you, and then the preliminary location is there by the Balboa Pier. We think this is an all-in project, about $3.5 million. That sounds like a lot. It has to go through coastal and have environmental, and that's kind of why the price is higher. This is what the preliminary designs look like. If you're familiar, everyone's familiar with this area by the Balboa Pier, right now there's a trailer there, or it's a triple wide, so this is what it might look like. This is the interior, sorry, the site plan, floor plan. I'm going to jump to, oh, sorry, I'll stop there if you have any questions about this facility. And again, we're in a trailer right now.
Yes, Councilwoman Pieter.
Dave, is the Junior Life Guard Facility costs, I know we're talking about private fundraising for part of it, but we were going to match, as I recall?
I think there was certainly a hope from the foundation that the city would help match that, because that's a lot of money to raise.
So, right now, it's, there's no money included for this at all in the FFP?
Uh, no.
Yeah, thanks.
Yes, Councilwoman Dixon.
Is this a, are you interested in some feedback as we go through these specifically?
Certainly.
So, are there alternatives to this current site? Now, we have these prefab mobile home extra wide, they've been there for how many years?
Long time.
What, Dave?
I was going to say, a long time.
A long time. And I know that, I do know and agree and understand that they need to be replaced. And so, the question is, replaced with what, something that costs upwards of $3.5 million total, regardless of the funding source, or have we considered a less expensive building that meets the functional requirements? Maybe it's another double wide?
We could certainly always replace the trailers and continue to upgrade them, that is always an option. I think you'll hear from the parents that they would like, they think the program deserves something better, and especially in regards to the restroom facilities, there's a need for the kids to have their own restroom facilities, because right now, generally, if you're a young person, you go over to the public restroom facilities to change, or, you know, so the thought is that it could, this building would be an improvement program-wise and safety-wise, so, but you're right, Ms. Dixon, there's a range of alternatives for us.
Current square footage is about 2,000 square feet, a little more, this is about 5,000. So, there are options if you wanted to give direction that way.
I'm going to jump to the Newport Pier next, then. So, you folks are following certainly the plan to replace the quite old restaurant shell that's out there with a new shell and a new vendor. I wanted to kind of talk about the options with you, and these are kind of back-of-the-envelope scribbles on what the alternatives would be. We do think something needs to be done. We do think the building needs to be taken down, and that there's a lot of, a number of piles that need to be replaced, and the total cost of that is about 1.3 million. Then, if you, if you were to layer on a new restaurant again, there's additional costs, because you'd have to buttress the pier area better to hold that restaurant, you'd have to improve the utilities, you'd have to go through the SEQA and permitting associated with that, and then the construction of the shell is estimated at 1.5 million. So, the net cost differential is about 2.28 million between these two alternatives. And I used an example of what the estimated rental income there is, and picked 200,000 a year, knowing that the Balboa Restaurant, for instance, gets, earns the city about one point, sorry, 120,000 a year. So, this would be doing significantly better than the Newport, than the Balboa Pier Restaurant. And it takes about 11.4 years to recoup that investment, that additional incremental investment. So, to me, I think everybody would really love a great restaurant out there. I struggle sometimes with whether or not financially it makes good sense, but maybe we shouldn't always look through the financial lens, but that's what this talks about.
Yes, Councilwoman Dixon.
A couple of questions. I and Mr. Hurdman had some questions, who maybe have some similar follow-ups. So, the differential is 2.8-
Uh, 2.2.
Excuse me, 2.2 million. How, maybe, there's a question for Dave Webb, if we were to do, well, at least the pier reconstruction upgrade work, this would have a life of approximately how many years?
The pier, you'd probably get 40 years, maybe 50 years out of a good pile. So, you'd have to put the piles on, and you could put a platform on there, and you could come back at some point and put a building on it. We'd have to know that ahead of time, because there is some structural reinforcement, or you could probably do that later. The other thing is utilities would need to be rerun out to the pier, particularly the fire line, if you're going to build a building out there.
So, in terms of the proposal for the building, Option Two, the invest, the city's investment in creating this restaurant foundation to support the amenities or just the basic infrastructure for a restaurant, for an improvement that would conceivably last 40 years, so the return on that investment would pay for itself, we'd break even at year 11 approximately, all things being equal on those revenue projections, is that about right? Then we'd have about 39 or 29 years of pure gain for the city, without an encumbrance of paying off this capital investment?
I guess, and the city manager mentioned that, it's about 11, maybe 12 years to repay it, with all things accounted for as we know it. There's obviously a risk when you build the end of the pier, there's other risks that we don't deal with on the land, so I can't quantify those.
All right.
One of the things that, you know, Dave worked in Huntington Beach before he came here, and they redid their pier so that it was higher. This pier is still a bit lower, and sometimes I worry that we, I'm sorry, I'm being the dark cloud, but this significant investment of a restaurant, and we could have a good-sized storm, and the restaurant will be in the water floating away, because in part of the height of the pier.
Has it always been this height?
I believe it's the original height. When we redid the Huntington Pier, we'd destroy it, if you remember, the end restaurant out there. It was actually the waves from underneath blowing the pier up from the bottom, so we raised the pier and refastened it, so it would take that upward force. This pier, I don't believe, I'd have to go through the structural dynamics, but I don't think it would take in that account, it may have to raise. So, but again, there's a risk to some strong storm. Piers get more damage out, we have a lot more replacement costs because of the nature of the waves and the beating it gets out there.
All right, thank you.
Anything further? Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Duffield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just wondering, what would it take to possibly upgrade the end of the pier to support a food truck, for example, one of those fancy new food trucks, and have it come out when there wasn't a storm?
If we replace the pier, it's actually a structural pier now, you can run trucks out there, so that first option would be to support a load out there. Again, we could even support a building on that, but you could support a food truck or something of that matter.
So, we have to spend a million three just anyway?
The original piles have not been replaced, obviously, there's a restaurant. I have heard from the old timers, I think they had to drive one pile through the roof at one time, and they probably slant it a couple, but most of those are the original piles, and now would be the time to replace those if you're going to take the building off.
Thanks.
Just so I'm clear, if a truck never goes out there, but an individual does, which would have to make it safe for the general public, is that option number one?
Yes, it would be a deck on top where the building is now.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to follow up on Mr. Duffield's question about food trucks, are there any other concepts we would consider that it would be visitor-serving to encourage people to go out to the pier? I know the fishermen are out there, which is wonderful. Could we consider a different structure where we have a buy level, where we have one level for visitors that can go up above, and the fishermen below, and then the visitors don't have to deal with the mess around the fish? Would there be any thought of the value of looking at alternative uses that do not require this enhanced structural capability?
I'm sure you could. You could look at some maybe prefab, but I'm just thinking off the top of my head, maybe a fish support item out there. I know Huntington Beach had a city store out there at one time where they sold goods. The trick on the structural foundation, they would hold that, I'm pretty sure we'd have to go through a building department and hold it. When you get into restaurants where you have ADA and elevators and need for grease traps and things like that, it changes the dynamics. The other side is the sprinkler system. The pier's not sprinkler, there's an expensive fire line that goes out there. If you were to build a building, I'm guessing we'd have to upgrade that. If we weren't to build a building, because it's a concrete deck, I would suggest maybe we don't need that. But, those are, those are big costs that play either way, food trucks, portable buildings, maybe vendors, we talked about, something that comes out on the weekend, I mean, different things could happen out there.
Very good. Please continue.
Continuing along. Next on the list is Lower Castaways. This is one of two slides, there's probably, we came up with probably four different options, and I'm just going to go through them quickly. One is leave it as is. Just as a reminder for folks at home, Lower Castaways is at Dover and Coast Highway, it's on the east side, and, sorry, the west side, and that now is open to the public, you can hand-launch your kayak or your stand-up paddle from there. It's a neat little place, it has portable restrooms right now, so one thought is just keep that as is, and then you go everything up to a kind of a grand idea, nice idea, that was presented to the city council probably three years ago, but let me step that up instead. Option Two is to do just some more upgrades to that park, depending on the improvements from half a million to a million. Then, there is some discussion out there of a public-private partnership out there that might involve a rowing facility, an additional rowing facilities, and arguably, that would be funded by the proponents of that. that would be funded by the proponents of that, and then it would be a shared public and private use, so that those improvements might be beneficial to the public as well, not just to a rowing entity. And then, option four is the one that came before the council, again, probably three years ago, which was quite a, quite a grand design there. So if you, if you did have additional thoughts on this, or wanted to move this to PBNR or something, that's welcome. That kind of comment would be welcomed. Any questions on this one before I move?
Yeah. Councilman Dixon.
Thank you. A few months ago, is that, are discussions still moving forward on that?
I think Mayor Protem Duffield knows more than I do about that.
Thanks. Yes, that is the idea. And it's a, you know how things go with all the agencies, so we're trying, they are trying their best to work and not offend anyone, and do it in a way that is, allows it to proceed. And as we know, it's a slow process, but...
It's a real process.
It's a real process.
Oh, that's good to know.
Yep.
Isn't there some revenue source tied into Lower Castaways?
We have a small amount of revenue coming in from the Irvine Company's use of that facility for parking, for a little marshal living area, as well as the Bay Shores community uses it for parking for some of their contractors, and they do pay the city rent for that.
Do we allocate that for any kind of improvement?
Goes into the general fund.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mayor Muldoon?
Yes. Mr. Hurdman.
Question to Councilman Duffield. What option are you working on for this? Are you looking at option four? Okay. Three, all right. Very good.
I'm gonna keep moving along, then. One of the things you talked about on that Saturday was a general plan update. We've scoped that out a little bit. We do, staff does think that it's timely to do a general plan update. We're obligated to do that every 10 years. So, really, what the question for you will be, and you don't need to answer it today, is what's the extent of the public dialogue that you'd like to have? You could do the public dialogue on steroids, and that could take about three years. You could do something shorter, and still have a robust public element to that. Anyway, the overall timing could be anywhere between 18 and 36 months, and that, depending on the proposed changes in the environmental, the level of environmental review. Kim Brand has talked about the major focus areas would be land use, traffic, sustainability, that's a requirement under state law, noise, safety, and of course Newport Harbor. We think about, it's about a $2 million project over two, at least two years. So it'd be in two separate fiscal years. Again, to us, this is something that the city needs to do. This is part of our own, our regular costs.
Yes, Councilman Hurdman.
Dave, being new on the council, explain that cost to me.
The cost is usually for both the environmental analysis, which can range from 500 to 800,000 dollars, and the, we usually bring in a consultant to do this for us, because it's not something we divert our existing planning staff to do. So it's a firm that would come in and do that.
Thank you.
So next, some other follow-ups. I know Mr. Avery talked about and was interested in the West Coast Highway Landscaping Project. We do think this one could and should be funded. We're recommending that it go in smaller bites, about a million dollars per phase. This is the last neighborhood enhancement project that was kicked around probably five years ago now. The other ones are all done, and I think to great effect for the neighborhoods and the community. This is kind of the last one. And Mark Licoevic and Dave Webb would tell you that actually doing it in smaller bites makes more sense, because it's a little bit easier to permit.
Councilman O'Neil.
So is the goal to, this is already on the CIP, so is the goal to use general fund money to do this through the CIP? Dave Webb, maybe, or Dave Kiff, either one?
It would be a general fund expense if we could do it. We could take it out of the 5 million. Some of these projects, we've gone above the 5 million in past councils, but if you want to keep it within that 5 million allocation, you could do that, too.
Okay.
Almost done here. There's another thing that I just wanted to bring to your attention, because council members have talked about this in the past. We do have a couple of properties that we're now leasing to entities. One is the Lido House Hotel property, that's the old city hall. And I know a couple of you have talked about whether or not it would make sense to sell that at some point, whether that's now, or a year from now, or two years from now. Perfectly appropriate conversation to have. There, there's the old West Newport Community Center, and that is off of 15th Street. Pacific Christian High School leases it from us. We still own the property, they do pay a lease revenue to us. We share the use of the gymnasium. We'd like to, whatever happens with that building, keep our use of that gymnasium, because we have a lot of recreation programs that run through there. And then I just have a catch-all. If I missed something, other subjects from the planning session I wanted, you folks wanted to address.
Thank you, Ms. Kiff. Mr. O'Neil.
Real briefly, Dave, it would be great to get a study session on our debt policies in our city, particularly the F-Policies, for a couple of reasons. One of them was, when the COPs were, when we executed the COPs, we didn't have those debt policies. We've since put together those debt policies. And given that one of the priorities that Mayor Muldoon has listed for the Finance Committee and the council is to address the use of, or requiring a vote to the COPs, it'd be fantastic to make sure we're talking about what our base is right now with our current debt policies.
And Mr. O'Neil, it'd be your preference that that come to the council for a study session before moving to the Finance Committee?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Hurdman.
Dave Webb, will you please explain to me where the potential refurbishment of Marine Avenue fits into this whole picture?
Yes, it's currently, there's a project in your current CIP you adopted, and I think it's 250,000, that would start the design and concept approval of that. We'd have to permit that, then we'd have to come back to you for the actual construction costs, and I don't have a number on that yet. You could fund that in many ways. You could direct us to use our gas tax allocation, which would be an appropriate fund. You could put part of the 5 million dollars every year in the general fund towards it, or you could have funded beyond that. There may be other revenues that we might be able to identify, but that's how we'd probably propose constructing it.
I'm a little curious as to why that's not listed here.
It's a good question, Mr. Hurdman, but we do have a cumbersome process of things. As Dave's noting, the CIP itself, a lot of this is not even in the CIP. So, we weren't presenting the CIP to you, but that is a project that, as Dave noted, has, is design funding. We would make a recommendation to you later in the year, not too much later, just a couple months, as to a construct, whether or not that could meet a constructibility threshold in an amount. So you'll see that again shortly.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Piattar.
Mr. Muldoon reminded me, the, things like our Bayside rehabilitation plan, where we're talking about the roundabout, and I know that Mr. Hurdman and a bunch of the neighbors, we've been working together to reconsider our design before we do the roundabout. Now, the budget for all of that is in the CIP plan, right?
It's in your current adopted plan, so the money's already set aside.
So if we actually did reduce the scope of that, and there were some savings, that could, those savings could either be used for another CIP project, or bring that back to, or put those extra funds back into the general fund.
Correct. Depending, we might have, if it's funded out of gas tax, it rolls back in the gas tax fund, or if it's general fund, it'd go back in.
If it's restruct, if it's restricted like that.
Correct.
Okay, so that's something that we, obviously, we want to continue as far as the rethinking of what our design's gonna be, but then the Finance Committee can decide what we want to do as far as spending money on it. Okay, thanks.
Okay, if there are no other questions from the dials this time, we'll open up to public comments on the side of my seat. A couple of folks in the crowd, and then we'll bring it back to us to signal to Mr. Kiff how we'd like to proceed. Hi, Ms. Brenner, please state your name for the record.
Hi, Joy Brenner, Corona Del Mar. I'm the founder and chair of the Friends of the Corona Del Mar Library, but I'm not speaking in that regard today, because we have not done any polling of our members to find out how they feel about these proposals. But I just want to speak as a personal resident and say, I've, you've done a really good job of stressing to the public, all of you, the unfunded pension liability that we have to deal with, and, and the seawall, the urgency of the seawall. And so, I don't plan to lead any charge to try and change your mind as far as pushing forward with the construction of the Corona Del Mar Library at this time. But I also want to stress, it was a textbook example of how you really gather community input, working with the library commission, and the city staff, and the city council, to bring a project to this point that really was, it had buy-in from so many different constituents. And I'd hate to see us put this off so far that we lose that momentum, and, and I know we never talked about fundraising for this project. I do feel that, you know, if push comes to shove, that there are members of our community that would, we could raise substantial funds for this project. So I hate to see it put off forever, because, you know, it's a great project. The other thing is, in the interim, we do have, if this is gonna be five years down the road, air conditioning is really a pretty essential ingredient of what we need in that library to function, because we have to currently close the library when it gets too hot. And that works for the staff, and it works for those of us in the community that can drive to the other libraries. But we have high usage of senior citizens there, and we have high usage of moms with strollers and that sort of thing. So if we could get air conditioning in the short term for that building, it would be a big plus. And there are a few other things, like we have windows that don't, won't close. There's, I believe that I heard the building was built in 55, and that it's substantially sound structurally. But windows that won't close, considering we're having rain now, is probably not a good option. And, and we do have furniture that's so compacted, there's no cushion in the chairs anymore. So if we could do something to make it, it's kind of an eyesore in the community. It certainly doesn't fit in with the current construction around us. So if there's anything that we could do in the short term that would make that really a, we have high usage right now, and I think we would have higher usage if we fixed it up a bit and made it more usable. So thank you very much, and happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Jim Alchiskas, and I'm the co-founder of Blue Water Grill. Greetings to the mayor and the city council, and I wanted to introduce myself to the new members of the city council. We've been pursuing a location at the end of the pier for about three years now, and we entered, we entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement with the city about a year ago, I believe. Just wanted to let everyone know that we're still very interested. We think it's gonna be, would be a great amenity to the city, and unlike some parks and other wonderful amenities, it will create a revenue stream. We've been very conservative in what our sales might be at the end of the pier, just because we're businessmen, and we want to make sure that we don't overpromise and under-deliver. But I don't think 200,000 is a, when you factor in percentage rent, is unreasonable at all, considering the size would be much bigger than what would be at the end of the Balboa Pier now. And it would also have a liquor license and other revenue generating, generating services along the pier itself. So, thank you very much, and happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. Hi.
My name is Lindo, I'm a resident of CDM. The kids today made some Valentine cards for you. May I get it?
Could you push the microphone down a little bit, just a second? Here, thank you.
Can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Okay. The library is the heart of our community, and we really want to make sure that we continue with our project and improve it, and do what we can, like Joy said, to make it workable for the young children and the elderly people. It can get really hot, even in the spring, or even on a hot day in the winter. And the windows are not closing all the way, the wind and the dust and the dirt blows in on it. So we hope that you can do something to improve it in the meantime. Many people want to be near our library, from young kids to seniors, our residents depend on it. And they want to be, to help, these services, to help increase our property value and associated property taxes. Parents who work outside the home depend on, on the library, and their nannies and families bring their kids to the CDM library three times a week, in addition to special programs, and for storytimes. Our library helps to build our community and provides an intellectual and nurturing atmosphere for our residents. Kids and elders benefit from interacting together and sharing the joys of being at the library. The library staff are excellent, a great resource, and they provide great programming to our families. Its small size makes it very quaint and brings our community together like no other site. As much as we love the current library, the library and the fire station needs to be rebuilt in the near future for the safety of our residents, and our firewomen and our firemen. In the meantime, air conditioning and reducing draft from the old windows, as I said, could really need, use an upgrade, especially if we're delaying this by five years. As a constituent and contributor to civic causes, who has donated $10,000 already for the Corona Del Mar Library project, I request that we, I request your continued support for the library renewal project. I have a neighbor who can only walk two blocks. The library is the only place that he can walk to. So please keep CDM library for our residents of all ages. Thank you very much. Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Avery?
I would just like to report, that was a very effective presentation. Thank you.
Hello?
Hi, my name is Nancy Abrams. I've lived in West Newport, gosh.
Nancy, you need to use the microphone, otherwise people at home can't hear you.
Oh, okay. I always do have that problem. I've lived in Newport, actually, since the late '60s, and I now own a home, or have since '74. And I just wanted to say about the restaurant, that the pier is, the historic pier is actually kind of a focal point of our neighborhood. And, I don't know, just to leave it vacant, I think, might be a mistake. I don't know. I think the pier deserves more glory than having food trucks and carts out there. And I think if it's left vacant on the end, I think the fishermen, we have a lot of fishermen there, and I know they belong there, but I think they're gonna take over much of the center portion also. They bring down shopping carts, ice chests, lounge chairs, and everything. And I think the pier should be for everybody. And I'd like to see a possible restaurant there, maybe downsize the magnitude of the restaurant, make it smaller, so that it's not such a burden. I don't know, I just, we in West Newport really love that pier, and we'd like to see a little bit more than what's been proposed as an alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Yes.
Happy Valentine's Day, all. My name is Karen Carlson, and I'm a longtime member of Corona Del Mar, and I think one of the first users of the Corona Del Mar Library. But it took the threat of losing it to get me involved in our community and what's happening here. And that's kind of burgeoning into a lot of projects. But today, I just want to say, I was out of the state when I heard that this was up for everything from being sold and to being delayed. This is such a vital part of Corona Del Mar. You've all heard the many, many reasons why we love it so much. I've put my heart and soul into working for this. I can see how we might need to delay it, but this has to be a project that, an ongoing institution in Corona Del Mar. And air conditioning, and maybe some windows, and you'd have a working library that everyone could use for several more years. So, thank you.
Thank you. And just, just so that, you know, I haven't heard any legitimate conversations about selling the property or calling the project off, so I think that hopefully is a rumor we will dispel today. Thank you.
My name's Graham Harvey. I am the chairman of the Newport Beach Junior Lifeguard Foundation, the arm, the private fundraising arm that Mr. Kiff was discussing.
our board. So, you know, on one of the photos that you saw, I guess one of the pages of the rendering, you saw a bird's eye view of the latest rendering that the city staff has presented. City staff has done a fantastic job in presenting a building this time around that the foundation and our constituents can support. So I just want to give Dave and everybody else down the line, lifeguard department, fire department, kudos. They've done a very good job in presenting a fantastic building. I'd like to publicly state today that the Newport Beach Junior Lifeguard Foundation is committed to offsetting a meaningful portion of the construction costs of a junior lifeguard building. I think we have some, you know, work to do as far as closing maybe the timeline and doing some fundraising and so forth between now and then. So I'd like to kind of keep this open as a work in progress, if possible. And in closing, we look forward to working with you on this, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Graham. Yes, Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes, thank you for coming. How would you quantify meaningful?
I mean, I think at this point, it's still, there's still some things. I mean, you know, on Dave's presentation, we had a $3.5 million estimate. What, the numbers that we've seen, there's a $2.4 million hard cost with, you know, another $1 million for possible coastal, possible overruns and so forth. So I think kind of whittling down what the actual number would be, would help us on our side. I can, like, flat out say it's a hefty six-digit number, like, right out of the gate. We've been working, or we've had some discussions with city staff on naming rights and so forth. So we think there are other substantial revenue streams to bring, you know, to bring our total raise higher on our side. But, I mean, I can be, I'm pretty confident we'd be well into the six digits from our end. So, may not be 50%, but it would be, it would be something very, very good, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Modoun and council members. My name is George Schroeder, and I've lived on the peninsula at 35th Street for about 29, 30 years now. Okay, you gave us a lot to digest. It seems like we had a city council the last 10 years that found a lot of fantastic projects to build. This civic center is one, and Marina Park, and they found a way to finance them. Now, we're living in times where we have to be more fiscally responsible. I applaud city manager Dave Kiff. He's been here a long time. I remember when he was an assistant manager back in the 1990s, when we had two assistant city managers. So I am, you know, concerned that we're at this place where we have to pick and choose, because I like all of these projects, I would like to see them all go ahead. So I'll just speak to the ones that I think are more important, and the ones that, okay, so anyways, I think fire station, too, obviously, that has, has to be done. That's the fire station at the old city hall site, okay? And I realize you're looking at alternative locations, so obviously you need to proceed on that highest priority. I think there's a good argument for the junior lifeguards, and with the last gentleman up here speaking to the fact that they might get some public participation, that would be a good thing to improve that. The pier restaurant, I remember the old restaurant that was there. I went to it one time, it was seafood, went out there, the food wasn't very good. The thing about McFadden Square and the Balboa Pier is, in McFadden Square itself, McFadden Square does okay. There are probably 25 or 30 fine eating establishments in the McFadden Square area. If a new restaurant gets built, all you're doing is cannibalizing the restaurants at, that they have to walk past to get to the one at the end of the pier. I have friends that come into town, or visitors who I don't know, and they're asking me, "Where is the pier?" And I say, "Well, we have two." But where's the pier with the restaurant? I go, "You gotta go past the first pier." Okay, downtown Balboa is struggling. You just spent a lot of money to put up a new sign so people will know it's there. Okay? If people want to eat at a restaurant at the end of the pier, we have a nice restaurant at the end of the pier, and it's there. And I did take to heart what city manager Dave Kiff said, and, you know, Dave Webb, that, I remember watching the Huntington Beach Pier at a high tide and storm, you know, actually gets shaken off of its foundation. So you can build a new foundation for a restaurant on top of a shaky foundation of the old pier. And we know that tides are rising, we're having higher king tides, perfect storm. So again, you know, I don't think anybody goes to Balboa Pier, I'm sorry, Newport Pier, McFadden Square, and leaves hungry, because they couldn't find a place to eat or get a drink. And I also don't think we need food trucks on the pier, because it's a two-minute walk up and down the pier. Why cannibalize the restaurants that are there? And plus, if you're eating out of food truck, you can't wash your hands or use the bathroom. Okay, so, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Schroeder. Yes, Mr. Moser?
Mayor Modoun and members of the city council. My name is Jim Moser. I have a number of rather disconnected thoughts about this. First, regarding the council discussion at the beginning of the meeting about the revenue sources of the city, I wanted to point out, and I believe this is correct, that the single largest revenue source that the city has is the residential property tax. And if in the 100-plus years of our city that has never funded a park, I think that's a matter of shame rather than a badge of honor. Second, I think this is kind of the 10th year of the facility financing plan, which started life in 2006 as the staff's recommendation for a facility replacement program. After 10 years, we're still not universally agreed on what the FFP letters stand for, but we have had a policy that it be reviewed and approved by the city council annually, although for many years it was thought of as just a planning tool that would show hypothetically, if we followed some program of facility replacement, we had enough money to pay for it. And it was not necessarily that the menu of facilities in it was cast in concrete. Yet, apparently now it is thought to have some significance, but I'm wondering what the significance of the January 14th on this plan is. This is indeed the one on the city website, but that was not a council meeting, so I don't know if this has been approved, when it was approved, or how. Regarding the Corona Del Mar Library, on Slide 8, the city manager told us that the current status is that is we're holding the construction bidding. This is a problem for me, because in California and in Newport Beach, we're supposed to have an open meeting law where the direction comes to the city staff from the city council at open public meetings. And as you may recall, before the installation of the new city council members on December 13th, the city council was asked to give the staff direction about the Corona Del Mar Library. As you heard, the bids in came in too high. The direction was not to put them on hold, the direction was to repackage them so it would be clearer to the constructors or bidders, and put them out to bid. And it's mysterious to me where or how the city staff got the direction to not follow that direction from the city council. I don't recall it being on a city council agenda since then. Regarding libraries in general, I noticed that the Balboa Library and Fire Station did not get the yellow treatment on the handout or presentation that we see today. So I'm hoping we could get clarity whether that library project has the staff's go-ahead while the one in Corona Del Mar does not. And then finally, regarding the general plan update, we were told that we have an obligation to come, to revise it every 10 years, where the 10 years is up last year, so we missed that deadline. And I'm wondering if that is really a state requirement or just guidance from the state? And if we were not to do that, what the penalty for not doing so would be? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Moser, so much to cover. We did try to do a general plan update, but it failed. Measure why. Mr. Kiff, could you please explain why in transition of council, the fire, the fryberry directions may have been halted?
Well, I didn't make sure I'm characterizing that correctly. We just have not put it out to bid yet. We wanted to talk with you about it before we did, knowing that there are new council members being seated.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes?
Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Paul Watkins, member of the Board of Library Trustees. When I get up on a Saturday morning, I go downstairs, and on the stainless steel refrigerator is one of those magnetic boards. And there's a list of Paul's duties. It's washing cars, it's sweeping the patio, it's doing the windows, it's doing all that to do stuff that all of us, I guess, have to do on the weekends. May I suggest that if the consensus is for the Corona Del Mar Library to freshen it, that we have a, an action list in place to start that process quickly. If it's the Board of Library Trustees that's to be involved, that's great. But what I'd like to do, if possible, is to have a timeline and an action list so that we don't stop that process. It sounds from the speakers here today that there's a bunch of stuff that needs to be done to make the library livable during this suspension period. Thank you.
Thank you. Honeydew list, huh? Any other comments? All right. See and none, bring you back to council. I am salivating here, so I think I'm going to go first. Couple of questions. The 2% that's put aside in Culture Arts Fund, what is that roughly to date? What's, what's in there?
About $441,000.
Right. And the Facilities Maintenance Fund, how, you can give me a number, but I don't know what that would mean as far as how well-heeled it is. How healthy is that fund?
We get about $1.5 million a year towards that.
And I'm asking because I, I do agree that we should, oh, I'm of the opinion, for the sake of the study session, that we should put off the fryberry, but we should do some improvements in the existing library that would make it accommodating in the meantime. And I'm not sure what that means exactly. That's something I think the residents will probably have a better feel for, whether it's AC or windows. But just, there are some things that I would personally like to just, sort of taken off the table, because I think there's a wide agreeance, at least the supermajority of the residents and us on the dais, that realize that these projects are not feasible anymore, given banning ranch or just the expense. So just for the sake of instruction, would like to see the utilities and corporate yard merger simply nixed indefinitely. I would like to see the West Newport Beach Community Center indefinitely, unless developer fees come back and a new community is able to be put in place, and, I mean banning ranch. I don't think it's necessary to do the Grand Howell Park. I used to live right there, it's a great park, but this dollar amount is kind of excessive. There are some things we could look at, but I personally don't think it's a necessity. As far as castaways go, I would support either leaving it alone or option three. As far as the pier goes, I would be open to relooking at it, but I'm tending to side on the not proceed side of that regarding spending money to build a structure that will take at least 11 years, conservatively potentially, to recoup. Let me see if I'm missing anything. The junior gar station is something that I think we can simply hold and follow the lead of the committee to see what funds we're able to come up with and to see where we are when those funds are raised. I'm interested to get input from my colleagues, especially Councilwoman Dixon, on what to do with the Lido Fire Station, but I do think it is somewhat more urgent than the Corona Del Mar Station. I am eager to sell the Lido Hotel property or negotiate it for a much more higher lease rate. And I'm probably even more eager to sell the old community center with restrictions on allowing access to the gym during certain hours for residents. Let me see if there's anything else. That's it for me for now. Councilwoman Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor Modoun. So are we informing staff as, kind of directionally, or do we need to get consensus? But I could give you my list, which is, seems very similar to the mayor's. But let me just, maybe you could just do some hen scratchings there to take the votes. The Lido Fire Station, to me, is a high priority. I know we'll be looking in closed session on some potential alternatives, and we'll talk about those. So I look forward to moving some new alternatives forward. And if it involves a different location, that may free up that space, and we could do some other exciting economic development in Lido. The Corona Del Mar Library Fire Station, I strongly emphatically support whatever we can do in the short term to make it a livable structure with air conditioning, windows, paint, carpeting, just improve it, not in an extravagant way, but improve it so it is inviting and functional. So I would support that, and keep on the table to look at in a three-to-five-year period of time, if financial circumstances warrant, to look at the project that we've been looking at, and the community has so passionately worked on and generously worked on for all these years. Newport Pier, in my heart of hearts, I'd love to see a restaurant, a very successful restaurant out there. I'm just kind of stumbling over the three, or the $2.2 million that we would have to find to shore it up foundationally, structurally. I would like to say I support a restaurant if we can, number one, lower the cost, so maybe it's a one-story instead of a two-story, we don't need an elevator, ways that we could just look at a different version. If the Blue Water Grill party is interested in working with us to see if we can right-size this from a financial standpoint, I hope we can do that, because I, I think the $2.2 is going to be a steep hill to climb. Lido House Hotel Property, I think that idea has merit, at least for the Finance Committee, to review that and the sale of the old West Newport Community Center. I would like the Finance Committee to review both those matters in terms of the best interests of the city from a long-term financial standpoint, and its marketability, and just what we're talking about. So I would be eager to look at that in the context of our financial future, long-term financial planning. And the junior lifeguards, I'd love to be able to do it. I've met with the gentlemen that were here, and the lifeguard community is a, junior lifeguard community is a sizable constituency in our community, and I hear them and support them conceptually. $3.5 million is a lot of money. I would like to find a way to, again, right-size that from a financial standpoint. How can we meet in the middle with, I, actually, when I've been meeting with the families, I always thought it was going to be about a million and a half, and I thought they raise half, and we contribute half, and we've got a deal. But now, the numbers have jumped, as they tend to do. So I would like to see what they can raise, and maybe if we could right-size, downsize a little bit on the function, because the square footage, as you said, is significantly larger than what the current double wides are. And I, and I think that's, finally, the West Newport landscaping, I'd like to see that go forward. I've made public statements on that, I'd like to see us find a way to do that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hurdman?
I need a little history on the existing West Newport Community Center and why it's being leased out to a church. Am I hearing that we actually have a community center in West Newport?
Well, Mr. Hurdman, so the lease is to, not to a church, but a high school, it's a private Christian high school. The community center was a, an old elementary school. Actually, I think it was actually a school where the now founder of Pacifica Christian used to go to. So it was basically a two-story building with some pretty old classrooms, but they functioned well. There was a dance room, a gymnastics room, and then the big deal is the big gymnasium. It's a great gymnasium. So that's kind of it. Parking's not great. So working with the previous council, the council wanted that lease to be executed with Pacifica Christian, we did that. So they've taken over everything except the gymnasium, and it's working out pretty well. And then we, in turn, moved to a more industrial area about half a mile away on 16th Street, where we have a bigger area that's now just a dance area, there's a little crafts area, and then there's a gymnastics area that we keep set up full-time, and it's working and then there's a gymnastics area that we keep set up full-time, and it's working pretty well.
Okay. Where is this located?
So the old one is on 15th Street. So picture the triangle where the 7-Eleven is, it's Superior and, sorry, Placentia, and then 15th Street goes off from that. If you go up to 16th Street, that's where our new facility is, and we have, I think, a five-year lease on that.
All right, thank you. My priorities would be, given the very beginning of this study session and the presentation that you made, Dave, on our unfunded liability, I'm gonna whittle this down even more. Lido Fire Station, CDM Library refurbishment, Junior Lifeguard Headquarters with foundation support, and West Newport Landscaping would be the things I'd... Those would be priorities for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurdman. Mayor Pro Tem Duffield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I basically agree with your assessment of all this. I do struggle a bit with the pier. I kind of feel bad for a gentleman who's spent a lot of time. Kind of may have let him down a path. I tried to get out of our engineering staff what it's gonna take to hold up a structure before we went down this path, but I understand that was hard to do, so I don't blame them. But sadly, the reality is that it's a couple million bucks, and we thought it was significantly less than that. So I hope he hasn't spent too much money. But at the end of the day, we might be able to revisit it if something down the road happens better. So I don't want to lose sight of that, but I am confused. 1.3 million dollars. In other words, if we did nothing, is the pier gonna stay there? Do we have to do nothing? Or do we have to do something?
Yeah, and I think the numbers are a little confusing, but you have a series, I think, there are 70 old piles underneath that pier that haven't been changed out, because the restroom's on top of the restaurant. So if we take the restaurant off, we need to change those piles out just to support the pier, not just vertically from the dead load, but the lateral load that hits the pier from the waves. Those will need to be changed out and a deck put back on. Should you want to build a restaurant, you're still gonna need to change that foundation pile out. You're just not putting the deck on, and then you're gonna build a restaurant on top of that. So the differential cost is a little bit on the pier and the utilities, but also, as I think Mr. Kiff said, building the shell of the restaurant adds, was it a million and a half or something, to the project? Which we would build the shell, and then they would build the tenant improvements in.
I got that, but I still didn't get it. Can we just not do anything?
We could for a little while. Remember, there is a beat-up old restaurant up there that's boarded up and looks terrible.
So we need to tear that down?
That needs to be taken down. There are utilities that connect to it, too. Okay, okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. We gotta tear it down.
Councilman O'Neil.
Dan, I had a question. I was looking back at the CIP, specifically looking at the discussion about the CDM Library and Fire Station. And one of the things in our CIP is that in 2000... Well, a little... I can't remember the year, but we have a rebudget from this last CIP of about 5.5 million dollars. And then last year, we budgeted an additional $750,000, if I recall correctly. So right now, budgeted for that, there was about 6.3 million dollars. Is that about right? If that's what the CIP says?
You're referring to the Corona Del Mar Fire Station Library? Yes, there's about 6.9 that was budgeted for the project this year. And again, it comes out of the FFP. It's just in the budget now. It's money that hasn't been spent.
And that's the question. That's why I wanted to make sure I understood. So when we're talking about rebudgeting, I've always understood that as basically that is allocated money. And so when I reference the 17 million dollars sitting right now in the facilities financing plan, that 17 million dollars unencumbered? Or is that 17 million dollars include allocations like the rebudget for the CDM Library?
So typically, as projects start out and in their early inception, I don't transfer the money out of the FFP until the budget becomes clear. Once they get going, I may transfer money out. I do not believe that 17 million, that I don't believe I've transferred out that 6 million out of the FFP for the library yet.
Okay. Right. So it's allocated, I mean, it's allocated, but it's still there, essentially unencumbered, unless, you know... Depends if you move forward, yeah. Okay, all right.
Councilman Piotr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just buzz down the FFP list. Definitely the GPA update, 100%, let's get going on that. And I would love to see that a very quick schedule. I'm looking at having it complete by June of next year, and then if we do need to go on the ballot, it would go on the November 18 ballot. Again, the FFP, definitely utilities, corporate yard, we kill. The Fire Station on the Peninsula and the Fire Station-Library combo. Is the Lido Station falling down? Other than the fact it's hard to get a truck in, it's functional?
Well, it's old, and it's got a big old wall to the apparatus bay that I worry about every time the ground shakes, so that we'd have that wall fall down and crash into the few emergency vehicles we have on the Peninsula that need to respond. So, yeah, I worry about it. But is it safe? It's functioning. It's next to be replaced, though, so...
Now, wait a minute. That was built in 1952, right? That's my birthday, so come on. Hold on here. It's a little shocking.
Duffy scares me, too, when he shakes.
And I have a birthday present to prove it.
Okay, so seismically, it's 1952 standards. Has there been any kind of a seismic upgrade in the meantime? I mean, is this something that could stay as-is with proper maintenance for a couple more years?
I don't know the history and the seismic upgrade at this point, but I know we've been putting in new roofs and heavier maintenance, year after year, into the building. So I'm guessing we could get a few more years out of it?
So it's already up to speed. The roof has been replaced and everything. We don't need to replace it now. My preference would be to, you know, delay that as long as we can, unless there's some opportunity, real estate-wise, to take advantage of that and at least get a little bit closer or a better look on our financial scenario before we go ahead with it. I can't tell by your list, I presume that the Fire Station Library down on the end of Balboa is not part of any planned budget. It's on a delay status.
We didn't bring it before you today, because we haven't done anything yet on it. So we'll probably talk about that more the upcoming budget year, if we propose it at all.
Okay. And then the CDM Library and Fire Station, again, if we are gonna delay, which I'm in favor of, I would like to see what kind of deferred maintenance we've been putting off and what we need to do to keep it up to speed. Sunset View Bridge, obviously, with grants are great, but no spending on it. Newport Community Center, like everybody else, defer that. Castaways, I like the rustic look. I'd love to see it more usable with picnic tables and, you know, other rustic improvements. But I'm also in favor of if we come up with a partner and it ends up being privately funded to improve it, just call that option three with the private side. That sounds great. The Newport Pier, I would say demo the restaurant, rehab the pier, and not go ahead with the And then I am in favor, like the mayor, in divesting our property. I'd like the Finance Committee to look at it, what our options are, and I would be interested in the 2% for arts, going back to the FFP fund. And that's all I had. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Avery.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm in largely agreement with you on these points. A couple of things. You know, times have changed, obviously, and this is a very generous town, and the Corona Del Mar Library is very loved, as we know, and along with the Fire Station, but the library in particular, in terms of the group behind it and that uses it, and the Newport Junior Guards is, you know, just an iconic thing in this town, and we all know what that is and how valued that is. And again, a very supportive group behind that. And I think also, I'm somewhat aware of the Lower Castaways idea of a rowing aquatic center there, and again, a very passionate group. And there's a lot of examples of public-private partnerships where the public supplies the land, and the money to build, whatever is going to be built, and the idea and the genesis and the whole thing comes from the private side. And I know this town has the capability, we have the capability, the passion and the capability to achieve that. So I'm not saying an absolute, but I just think, given sort of what we're looking at financially, I would urge to maybe rev up those, all three of them, or sort of have a group behind them and to reach out further and see if we can basically fund them all privately. I think maybe the target should just be shifted a little bit for our passionate residents that enjoy these facilities. Maybe they don't even go, but they really like the idea of it. So it's compelling, and there's several examples in this town where that's occurred before. So I would urge that. But I would like to see more examination of the Fire Station Number Two, just to see, you know, with 8 million bucks, a lot of money, can we make it go another five years, four years, get into seismic things? And everything else is pretty straightforward. I don't know if we can kind of look at things. Obviously, we want to provide the basic necessities, so certainly the Corona Del Mar Library needs some help there sooner than later. And perhaps there's something, even at Grant Howell Park, there's a couple of items, if there's safety items, something like that, that we should look at. But again, Grant Howell Park is another well-used, loved facility, and perhaps people would be willing to help with that. This town is, for some reason, is just so much better positioned, and the residents have so much passion and ability to help in these matters. So I think we should, you know, prevail upon the organizations behind these wonderful institutions to redouble their efforts, and certainly we'd be behind them. And perhaps there's some other partnerships that we've worked out in terms of maintenance, using existing staff to help support these facilities when they get built. So that's my view of it. I think overall, we're sort of heading in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon.
So Dave and Dan and Dave, what are we looking for in terms of... Is there a number that you're looking for? For example, just off the top of my head, the 25 or 30 million on the newly proposed West Newport Community Center is off the table, you know, for a period of time. So we've just not... We're not going to spend 35 million that we may have spent this year and the next immediate, next couple fiscal years. So what would you like to see? Is there a number or a priority ranking that we should be looking at? And Mr. Avery's point about the community involvement and contributing to that, I'm a big supporter of that, and I know, I agree with him, that the community can get aligned and be financially supportive. So is there... How do we rank, order these? And how far do you want us to really go?
That's a good question, Councilmember Dixon, and I don't think I can answer it here. What I'd like to do is work with Dan and the Finance Committee on how the removal of these projects might change the general fund contribution to the FFP. And what that does, it allows us to take that general fund money and do something else with it. And I don't know the magnitude of that yet, because remember, with the West Newport Center, some of that was going to be funded by developer fees, which are no longer realistic right now. So it's not like all that money is going to come into our coffers. So with your permission and with the Finance Committee's wisdom, we'd take a look at that and then come back to you as a part of the next time you see this with that recommendation.
I support that. I would like to see the Finance Committee go through some scenario planning on worst-case, next-best case, and good case. I mean, how dramatic do we want to go? The city, and just for the purposes for everyone's understanding, we are not falling off a cliff. We have a strong revenue base. Everything we've talked about today, in Mayor Meldun's words, are... Much of it is nice-to-have, and we are a city that does things for nice-to-have. We are not falling off a cliff. While the unfunded pension liability, as I've said, does give me nightmares, it's not something that we need to pay off overnight. We could... The Finance Committee is working on a plan that would be affordable to the city to pay this down like a mortgage over the next 20 or 30 years. And frankly, it's not going to go on forever at that rate. The unfunded portion will be diminished significantly, if not eliminated, because we are already in the midst of a new second-tier pension plan that was passed by the state legislature in 2012. So the new plan will be fully utilized in the next 20 to 30 years. So this problem is generational, and hopefully will be gone long after I'm gone, but we are on the path forward, and through the good work of the Finance Committee, we will have a plan going forward. So I don't want... It's not slit our wrists time. I mean, it's something that we have to just be prudent. We have to be smart, prudent, and financially, fiscally responsible, and bring the community along with us, see where they want to be financially committed to help keep our community strong with the quality amenities that drive property values in this community. So that's what I hope we can do. Thank you.
Councilman Hurdman.
One, I don't mean to drag this out, but I attended Councilwoman Dixon's most recent Town Hall meeting, and there was a presentation done on Mariners Mile. And correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't the Sunset View Pedestrian Bridge over Superior and over Coast Highway a part of that presentation? Was it?
We did present it. We did talk about it that night, but not as a part of Mariners Mile.
Not as a part of Mariners Mile?
Yeah, I remember it's a little further.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman O'Neil.
Real briefly, I suppose this is one of those times where having so many financial documents makes it a little difficult to remember exactly where all of our funds can be found. But I will say, I think that what we ought to be doing with the Corona Del Mar Library is continuing to rebudget it, because that is the way to make sure that we are in a position where this doesn't go away. And so in our CIP, we have it rebudgeted. I'd like to see it continue to be rebudgeted, because I do want this to be a priority in the CIP budget, as well as essentially allocated from our FFP, because this is important for both, for two big sectors of our community. One is for our local families, which I'm particularly sensitive to, and the other is to our safety, our fire. And so on this particular issue, given that some of that money is restricted, given that it is coming out of developer fee agreements, and that's the entire point of the FFP and the Facilities Financing Fund in particular, not all that money could be used anyway toward something like a pension paydown. Not all that money can be used toward a variety of projects inside this community, but it can be used toward all the projects we're just listing. So if we're talking about priorities and we're using the Facilities Financing Plan as a way to prioritize those, we can look at when those projects are coming up due, and there are a handful of them that are either past due or will be coming up due in the next four or five years. But given that we have a rebudget set up inside, our budget is already, I'd like to continue to see that in the CIP rebudget that will be presented this year to the council, and I'm sure we'll have more discussions about that at the Finance Committee.
Thank you. All right. I think everyone's expressed an opinion here, too. It's been fun. The West Newport Beach... I'm sorry, the Sunset View Pedestrian Bridge and Dog Park, it just says here, "Grants." Tell me what that looks like, please.
So the thought would be that, as a couple of you have expressed, set this aside, but continue to seek funding for grants to accomplish it. And we've been looking at grants anyway, but just making a more formal statement on your part and then on staff's part, that that's the primary funding source for that project.
So it doesn't go forward unless the grant is...
Generally, that's what we're recommending, yes.
And what if it does go forward? We can address it then and how much will be coming from the FFP?
That's right. We actually... Dave's gonna point out, we might need to do a little bit of environmental on it in order to make it qualify for grant. on it in order to make it qualify for grants. So it's kind of a catch-22 there. We'll report back with you on that.
Okay. Mr. Kiff, I know this is a difficult list to come up with. Mr. Moser, Kiff and I did meet 101 first to go over this, but there's no Brown Act violation because it's just Mr. Kiff and I. And I feel like it almost takes a piece of, you know, the city's heart and soul to come up with this list, but it's also an opportunity to preserve this wonderful city for years going forward. We can always bring any of these issues back and vote to fund them if the money's there. But if we're in a position where the money's not there, that's a more regrettable place to be. So I appreciate very much the discipline from my colleagues on council and from staff taking a very hard look at the things that are nice to haves, dreams, and not necessarily at all in some scenarios. But I'm also grateful to the residents who showed up today to express their understanding, especially about Coronet Omar Library, that you understand that we do not want it to go away, we're not going to sell the property, we appreciate your cooperation, and we will remain committed. And I like Councilman O'Neil's idea of incorporating it on an annual basis essentially in the budget until it's actually something that we can go forward with, because it's so important to the community at large. And I look forward to the presentation we'll get on the library election auditorium and see if that's something that can be done on the private fund side, as well as watching Newport Beach Junior Guard do the best they can on private funds. And hopefully, Mr. Avery is correct that we're able to do this with some local, non-taxpayer-funded resources as well. So with that, I believe unless there are any other questions from the dais, we are complete, we've completed this portion of it. So there's no more direction needed from staff, Mr. Kiff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we're set.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much for that presentation and that grueling process. Public comments? I believe we're complete with that item, public comments?
Public comments are invited on agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to three minutes.
Thank you. Any speakers?
Mayor Muldoon and members of the council, my name again is Jim Moser. Regarding the closed session, which is the opportunity to comment on that, Item C was, to me, a puzzling, long list of property negotiations for properties that were generally in the Lido Village area, and I think the city manager has well let the cat out of the bag, that the reason for those negotiations is the staff is considering new locations for the Lido Fire Station. I would just suggest, in the interest of transparency, it really would not have hurt anybody to put that on the agenda, that that was why you were negotiating regarding these properties, that you're looking for a potential new fire station location. Indeed, there might be members of the public that have an opinion about that and the relative merit of the various properties that might have been useful to you in your private negotiation or discussion about that. One that I was aware of and know about a little bit is, under Item C, you're having a conference with the legal counsel regarding the lawsuit that the Orange County Museum of Art has filed against the city of Newport Beach. That is obviously their lawsuit about the referendum petition that nearly 14,000 people signed, and which is the subject of Item 21 on tonight's agenda. If your discussion in private is going to be about how the existence of a lawsuit affects the ability of you as a city council to act on the petition, I think that's a matter of considerable public interest that should be discussed in public. And if the discussion is going to be about the substance or merit of the lawsuit, I wanted to point out to you that I think that lawsuit has very little chance of succeeding. The courts in California have a history of substantial deference towards the public's right to petition the government, and although we have in the law what looked like firm rules that have to be followed, the general standard is you only have to have substantial compliance with those. In this case, the question being presented by the petition was really a very simple one. It was whether the people wanted to vote on the matter or not. And the claims that they somehow were impaired in knowing whether they wanted to vote, sign to vote on the matter or not, was that three out of the 3,780 largely irrelevant pages that the council wanted to have in that, three of those pages were missing. I wanted you to know that, in fact, two of the three pages were properly in the petition, in fact, clearer and better copies than were posted by the city clerk on the city's website. There's only one out of 3,780 pages that was inadvertently copied twice, so that one was missing. And the second claim is that the petition was not legible. I don't think, out of the 14,000 people, there were very many who complained that they didn't know what they were signing because they could not read the petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Seeing none, we are in recess until 7:00 regular meeting.
And just briefly, the city council adjourned a closed session to discuss Agenda Item Numbers 4A through D, including meeting with legal counsel, discuss initiation of litigation in regards to two matters. Meeting with legal counsel discussed the litigation cases entitled Cabrera versus Newport Beach, Balwepuna versus Newport Beach, and Orange County Museum of Art versus Newport Beach. Meeting with real property negotiators Simone Jurgis, Mark Vokoyevich, and Lauren Wooding discuss negotiations of the price and terms of payment with M&amp;G Newport Beach LLC, Newport Beach Mixed Development LLP, Lead Associates Two LLC, Bishop of Protestant Episcopal Church in Los Angeles regarding the properties at 2807 Newport Boulevard, 532nd Street, 516 32nd Street, and 530 32nd Street, and to conduct the performance evaluations for the city manager, city attorney, and city clerk.
Good evening. Call a meeting to order for the February 14, 2017, regular meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all council members are present on Valentine's Day.
Thank you. Happy Valentine's Day. Closed session report, Mr. Harper.
There's no closed session report this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. Pleasure allegiance. Would we mind having Councilman Will O'Neil lead us in the pledge?
Well, it's appropriate on Valentine's Day to express our love for our country. Place your hands over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And is Rabbi Young here? He's scheduled to be here, but I don't see him, so I'm going to put someone on the spot here. Councilman Scott Piotar, do you want to lead in vocation?
Have to bend down for the microphone here. If you'd bow with me. God, we thank you for the time you've given us to come together and help decide the direction of the city. We ask that you would give us wisdom as a city council, making decisions for the city. We thank you for the unified city that you've given us, and we ask just for your guidance to pull us together in Christ's name. Amen.
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. City council announcements and items that council members would like to be placed on future agenda. Mr. O'Neil?
I'm sorry, announcements or...
So these are city council announcements, and there are also items you would like placed on the future agenda?
I don't have any for the, for future council, but I do have a couple of announcements. First, I'd like to say, hopefully my daughter's watching, happy Valentine's Day to my wife and my daughter. I'm sorry I'm not with you tonight, but since I'm here with my fellow council members, happy Valentine's Day.
Oh.
Take one and pass it down.
Pass what down?
Aren't you nice?
And I didn't get anything for you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. So this week, Heroes Hall opened up in Costa Mesa, and thanks to the leadership of Mayor Kevin Muldoon, Newport Beach is a proud participant in the sponsorship, and I attended. And I'd like to make sure I pass down the challenge coin that I received to Mayor Muldoon for his spearheading of the effort. Thank you. We, since the last meeting, I also attended a CERT Awards banquet with Mayor Muldoon and Councilmember Jeff Herdman. The Police Department Promotion Ceremony was phenomenal. We had Jeff Brower promoted up to deputy chief. We also had Rachel Johnson appointed to police lieutenant, our first female police lieutenant in Newport Beach history. And we had Bob Bennett appointed up to police sergeant. I'd also like to note that both Rachel and Bob served our country in our armed forces, and I sincerely appreciate their efforts and service. I also attended a ribbon-cutting ceremony at the Holiday Inn Express on PCH. They have renovated and revitalized the area. And finally, I'd like to note that Councilwoman Dixon and I served on a panel at Newport Harbor High School. I'd like to say a very brief thank you to Principal Sean Bolton, and I'd also like to point out that Chief John Lewis was also there, and it was a true pleasure serving on the panel with Chief Lewis and Councilwoman Dixon. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Piotar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a request that I'd like to take the city's wireless telecommunications facility and rights-of-way ordinance, and I would like to bring that back in the form of a study session at a time when you think it's appropriate.
Thank you. We'll do a straw question on the next section as far as who supports that.
You don't want to talk about that now?
First, I'm going to do announcements and...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes, a couple of announcements. I'm pleased and excited to announce the Second Annual Women in Newport Networking Forum will be held Thursday, March 16, in the community room from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. We're thrilled that our supervisor, Michelle Steele, will be our guest speaker, and will highlight opportunities for all attendees to understand how to serve the city, serve our city on a council-appointed commission, committee, task force, and to create opportunities for civic participation and civic leadership. The event is free and open to all community members, men too, and women in particular. And for more information, please visit NewportBeachCA.gov/WIN, W-I-N-N, Women in Newport Networking. So mark your calendars, Thursday, March 16. On the announcements of things that happened, I would just want to say what a pleasure it was to salute our new mayor at our Speak Up Newport Dinner last Friday night. Who knew you were a stand-up comic? Great sense of humor, married with, aligned with, and important communication about our city's goals. So it was great. It was a sellout crowd, and it was great to be there to honor our new mayor and our new mayor pro tem and the rest of the council. And special recognition to Speak Up Newport. They put on an outstanding event. We're not doing future agenda items?
Well, so, and this may be an oversight that Leilani and I both made. We looked at the agenda together. First, we're doing items you want to have placed on future agenda. Next, we will take up items that have been requested at the prior council meeting. So now is the time, if you have something that you have not mentioned before, to introduce it.
May I do that now?
Yes.
Okay, so I would like to put, to agendize, and we'll discuss at the next meeting, the subject election and campaign reform. We spoke about that a bit last year, and now that we are between elections, it's a good opportunity for us to look at our existing laws and regulations as to how we can improve our election and campaign laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Herdman.
Not to be redundant, but, well, I won't be redundant. I'll start off with Councilman Avery, Councilman O'Neil, and myself participated in an all-day-long training put on by the California League of Cities. It was a training on governance, and I think we all walked out absolutely saturated, but it was well worth our time. Councilman, or, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Duffield recommended to me early on that I participate in this day, and it was certainly worth it. Attended the CERTS Award Dinner, the police promotion ceremony. Mayor's Dinner was outstanding. And then the only other project I've been working on with Dave Webb is the modifications to Bayside Drive that the prior council gave authorization to the staff to work on a design. And we pulled together some community leaders from the various neighborhoods and villages that would be affected by this redesign of Bayside, sort of gone back to square one, and that is a work in progress right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Avery?
Nothing here, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Duffield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to reiterate that I was very proud of your speech and that it was very deep and deserving. I hope you don't expect the same from me. I have no way, shape, or form will be able to reproduce something like that. So it was very, very good, and I was very proud of you for that. Thanks.
Thank you. I expect better things from you, actually. Some good stories I'm sure you'll tell. For a future item, I would like to discuss, and I know Mr. Kiff has already touched on this with some emails, the zoning in future of the Newport Beach Tennis Club. Let's have that item brought back for discussion. Not necessarily an action item at that stage, but learning what the possibilities are in preserving the club. And also, I know that there were discussions about possibly bringing to the forefront the public aspect of deliberation regarding the roundabout at Bayside and how best to work with the community in Babo Island. That one not as immediate as the Newport Beach Tennis Club.
Mayor Muldoon, I think Councilman Herdman had mentioned to me that he wanted one other item potentially added to the next agenda.
Mr. Herdman?
Yes, in regards to Agenda Item Number 21 on this evening's agenda, I request that this item be placed on the agenda for action at the February 28 meeting.
And just briefly, so last week, Council for OCMA contacted our office and informed me that the city could face civil liability if it takes action to repeal the approvals associated with the museum house. I spoke to outside council, and I don't see any issue with going ahead and considering that next meeting. We should be able to wrap up any outstanding legal issues prior to that time. So I just wanted to let the council know that, because I know there'd been a reference in the staff report to that, outside council was looking at this.
Thank you. Any other issues to be brought up at a future time? At this time, we'll discuss matters which we have requested prior to this meeting be brought forward, and we'll see if there are three council members in support of the particular issues brought before. The first is my own request to have City Council Policy A-19, Guidelines for Invocations. So at this time, just like to see a show of hands of who supports discussing the guidelines further at the next council meeting or one thereafter. Thank you. So I see it looks like we have the votes to discuss that further. I now have to recuse myself on the second issue, which is brought up by Councilman Piattar because it involves wireless communications, and I'm in the communication business. So I'll turn it over to Council, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Duffy-Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. So updating the city's wireless to all the communications facility and public rights-of-way ordinances, as well as reviewing the fee schedule for small antenna installations. Would, I need a show of, a show of hands, who's interested in this item? Three, four, five. I am. Thank you.
And we can get the mayor back now?
Mayor can come back. Please come back. Bless you.
Thank you. All right, then the last issue to discuss at a further council meeting, study session on alternatives to improving safety on oceanfront walk, and this was brought forward by Councilmember Dixon. Show of hands, who supports studying this issue? Everyone listened to my speech about unity, apparently, because we're doing really well here.
It's Valentine's Day.
It's Valentine's Day. It's for lovers. And thank you. Well, I now have a gift for my wife. She's gonna love it. All right, now we have public comments on consent calendar.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 21. Public comments are invited on consent calendar for members of the audience. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you, council. Any items to pull from the consent calendar, Councilmember O'Neill?
Number nine.
Councilmember Piattar?
Number four, please.
Councilmember Dixon?
None.
Councilmember Herdman?
None, but I do need to recuse myself from items four and seven. I have a conflict, and will recuse myself because of a real property interest close to these agenda items.
Councilmember Avery?
None.
Mayor Pro Tem Duffield?
I need to recuse myself on item number three because I have a rental boat business in the harbor.
Thank you. And before I go to myself, Councilmember Dixon, do you have a clarification?
Just on item number 20, appointment to the water quality Coastal Tidelands Management Committee, just a plea for applications for interested residents, citizens to participate. We, I believe we have one or two openings, two, one? So we still have one open seat. So if anyone is interested in efforts to work to improve our water quality, please submit an application. Thank you.
Thank you. And for myself, I have a recusal on item five related, again, to my employment, excuse me, in the telecommunications wireless business. That's undergrounding issue. And as well, I would like to lodge a no vote on item three. So I know that's a lot, so I'll give the Mayor Pro Tem a couple moments.
I don't know if I got the no vote. Oh, yeah, I did. Okay, I'd like to move the, or make a motion to move the balance of the consent calendars, item, items 1 through 21, with a no vote on item number three from Mayor Muldoon, and with item four pulled by Councilman Piattar, and item number nine pulled by Councilman O'Neill, and with a recusal on item number four and number seven from Councilman Herdman, and with a recusal on item number five from Mayor Muldoon, and a plea, I don't know how I do this, never heard this, a plea from Councilwoman Dixon on water quality volunteers, and a recusal on item number three from myself.
Thank you. We'll second that long-winded motion.
I second.
Okay. Shall we vote?
Don't we have public comments?
Thank you. Public comments, please. No, baffled. Oh, here we go. Yes.
Good evening. Brian Ozonian. I own property on Balboa Island. I want to speak to item five. I've sent you lots of mail, but I thought I'd just come with a couple more thoughts. But it's, it's, when this issue came up, it brought back war stories from previous councils back in about 2009. It was an awful time. We were in the other building. This was just a dream at the time. And it pit neighbor against neighbor to something that was so awful, it motivated the election of most of you. I have to say, it was, it was so poor in taste that it rallied the people in a very awkward way to come out and change the council. This is before Doc Tax, this is before all of the recent events. So it has done that again, and although I don't take issue with the people in District 113, it is the concept of underwatering electrical power. Now, this week, staff told me that it's perfectly fine to submerge transformers underwater, and it actually enhances their operation. I take issue with that. I have an engineering degree and 40 years in the construction business. I think it's problematic. I've given you by mail examples of power failures when we underground water and, when we underground power, and they get wet in different areas of the city, especially on Balboa Island and Little Balboa Island, which happened to be the night of the vote of Balboa Island in 2009. That night, I went home, and the whole Little Isle was completely shut down because of a power failure because water got into the transformer. Now, so what I'm asking is that you pull this item and ask staff to investigate the long-term life of wat, of facilities. Like, you put the transformer in the ground, the connections, I'm told, only last 20 years. And we don't have a test in the city of 20 years. But I think further investigation for safety purposes, and people are making big investments in this, they don't deserve power outages because we can't see for the future. So I think that is my main concern I come here, other than the fact that you're imposing taxes on people with a few votes. It passed by 62.9%. So about five people decided the fate of, out of 250-some people in that district, to have a tax on their property. It just doesn't seem right. It didn't seem right in 2009. It doesn't seem right now. But that's another issue, that, of property rights and taxation. I think if you went around and talked to those people, they may one day want to change their vote. And I intend to be very active with this. You'll see me in and out on this because I think it's really wrong policy. Other areas of the city, fine, but submerging electrical power on Balboa Island is bad engineering. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stokes?
Good, or, good, good evening, I guess it is. Tim Stokes, Santa Ana Heights, up in the country. We call it up there, nice animal community. Tonight, you have before you an extension for a lease for one, one of the animal facilities that we currently have in the wonderful west side of Santa Ana Heights.
Tim, I don't mean to interrupt, but Mr. O'Neill polled that, so there'd be a separate discussion about it.
Okay, pardon me?
Couple more minutes.
See me stepping back really quick.
Yes, please state your name.
Hello, my name is Bill Willis. I reside at 107 Garnet, Balboa Island. I am the Chairman of the Proponents Committee for Underground Assessment, District 113. I'm also retired manager of engineering for Southern California Edison, responsible for all distribution engineering activities. I'll be brief. Brian has made a speech many times in the past. He's just factually incorrect concerning the reliability of underground systems. Little Balboa Island has been undergrown now for 17 years. Lido Island has been undergrown with the basic same facilities for 30 years. Two areas on the peninsula have been undergrown for 30 years. So the assertion that it's not a reliable system is just factually incorrect. As far as the commotion, and last time, I agree, it was a terrible, terrible process. It did divide friends, neighbors. It just was not handled well. But at that vote, the west end of the island supported the project by 60%. So the commotion was not in the west end of the island, it was in the remainder of the island. So the west end of Balboa Island has always promoted undergrounding. We recently completed our petition process in less than three months. We have 65% of the property owners getting, signing the petition, which, if you've been involved in many of these processes, this is warp speed. There's tremendous support for it, and yes, there will be a few property owners who will not be happy. But that's democracy. We've sent two letters to all property owners asking that they give us definite feedback if they were opposed to the project. We've only heard from 30 property owners. So it's pretty overwhelming positive support. We've gone through the steps as required by the city, and I believe the project should be approved for moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. Any other speakers?
Good evening. My name is Carmen Smith. I live at Nine Way Bridge Court here in Newport, and am the president of the Newport Beach Arts Foundation. And I just want to say thank you. Thank you for putting item 19 on the consent calendar, accepting what we would like to give to the city, which is Sphere 112. It was the most popular voted-on piece of sculpture in the initial sculpture phase, and we think it'll be representative in the future of art here in Newport Beach, and the fact that we have a sculpture in, in the park program going on. And I thank you very much, Art. I have members here, too, but I think we all say thank you, and you're saving me having to write each one of you a letter. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, let's vote on the motion.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item three, ordinance number 2017-2, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending Newport Beach Municipal Code subsection 17.20.060B, and repealing City Council Policy H6 to prohibit the operation of vessels propelled by water above the surface of Newport Harbor. Mayor Muldoon, Mayor Pro Tem Duffield, council members Avery and Herdman. Vote one more time if you already did. Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, thank you. Now pulling first consent calendar items that were pulled. Number four, we have, is this, just for clarification, Mr. Harp, is this a reopening of the public hearing?
Yeah, I think it'd probably be best just to take public comment on. You don't actually have to reopen the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. So I'll follow the same format. Is there staff presentation on this item? Okay, Councilman Herdman said earlier he has a conflict for owning property. Okay. Is there staff presentation on this item?
Staff can certainly provide responses to questions, or can provide us a presentation if needed.
I think we probably should just do the presentation.
Sure. Before you tonight is the consideration of the resolution that the city council reviewed at your last meeting. The staff report includes two resolutions. One shows the strikeouts that reflect the council's discussion that evening. In your staff report, there are some other conditions of approval for your consideration shown on, on page, on page four. And there's four conditions there, and be, can go over those if you wish. And the applicant is here this evening if you have any questions of them.
Thank you. And before I go to the appellant and applicant, if either party wishes to speak, Councilman Piattar, do you have some words you want to offer?
Yes, the reason I pulled it off the consent calendar, I was looking at page four of the staff report. There are three conditions of approval that we really didn't discuss at our, at our last meeting, but came up in the negotiations with both the neighbors and the applicant. And it would be my proposal to add those three conditions. That's really what we're looking at, and they're, they're identified as conditions 1, 2, and 21, revision of 21.
All right, before we entertain discussion on this from the dais, I'd like to hear, I believe, is the appellant present, Ms. Sullivan? Looks like he is not, so we will only be hearing from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate your patience tonight. This is such a small but important item, and I did give the staff a PowerPoint with just three slides, and I'd like to move to that because I'm requesting a modification of condition number 41. And the difference is a few inches in the width of the door, and I would like to use this illustration above to demonstrate a server with a tray trying to get through a door. And the next one is even more illustrative because it shows the dimension and why we need to go from three feet to 42 inches. I would also emphasize the fact that on a 36-inch door, you lose two and a half inches with the jam, and so you don't really have a 36-inch opening. And then, when you go to a 42-inch door, you also don't have a 42-inch opening because you lose two and a half inches. So we're really talking a very small distance, but it allows us to get our servers out through that door while really adhering to all of the noise conditions, all of the other requirements that are imposed upon us. And we very much would be obliged to meet all those requirements. In addition, because one of the conditions requires that a noise study be done after we're open, then it's a good way to test if we're right and if we are conforming to all of those standards. So if you could clarify the language in number 41, if you'd go to the next slide here. I have offered the language that would need to be deleted and added. So it would go from three feet strikeout to 42 inches wide. And while there was some flexibility given to both the building director and the community development director, I felt it was appropriate if the council could clarify that language so that it would be very clear for all parties. And we've, we've really gone to a lot of work to try to meet all the other conditions, and this would be an important one for us. So thank you for your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you. Before you sit, so your request is for the, changes to 41, just 41, excuse me. Do you find Mr. Piattar's outlined changes agreeable?
The other, all the others are acceptable and agreeable very much, so.
Councilman Piattar?
I've gone back and forth. I know that Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Sullivan's been very adamant about 36 inches, not 42, for this door. He felt like he was acquiescing in allowing the door altogether, and wanted to make sure it gets shut in between uses. And of course, with the servants and service going in and out all the time, you know, the reality of it is, it's going to be open when the outdoor dining's in operation. And he just felt like that extra six inches is just pushing and pushing, and just didn't feel it was reasonable. You know, obviously, you know, you got a bunch of two-top tables out there, so they may have to use a smaller tray or hand-arm carry or, or go through the door not quite sideways, but it was a huge deal to Mr. Sullivan to keep it at 36. And so because that language and that condition's nebulous, I would actually propose keeping it per Mr. Sullivan's request and, and limiting it to 36 inches and not even allowing the flexibility to increase it based on operational needs. So it's really up to the council. If, it's, it's an area of disagreement that there's no resolution, and of all the things that we've gone through, it's a small area, and it's the last area. But if there's a disagreement and there's no movement on either side on that one issue. So either we change that condition to allow 42 or 36, but I would put whatever the council wants actually in that condition.
All right, so what I'd like to do is before we entertain a motion on it, see if, if you have a response. If not, we'll go to public comment, and we'll debate up here.
I believe I've made my case, and I appreciate-
Mr. Mosher.
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. I did try to read the staff report and the resolution, and I had a couple of comments. On page four dash fourteen of the resolution as drafted, I found a couple of conditions of approval that seemed rather curious, and number thirty-four and thirty-five both seem to be saying that the council is granting the approval conditioned on the city council authorizing the waiver of certain policies. And since you are the city council approving it, it seemed odd that you would be approving it contingent on your approval of it. I think it's probably something left over from the planning commission, conditions thirty-four and thirty-five. Also curious because the word accordion is misspelled in there. If you leave them in, you might want to fix that. But the approval is actually granted on page A dash nine, section two, where it says you're waiving council policy L twenty-one and doing these other things that are required there. But I would, and this is the substance of my point, point out that it's unclear exactly in section two exactly what you are waiving and what you are allowing in two respects. One is the question of whether the sidewalk is allowed to be raised, and I, my memory is fuzzy from your last hearing as to what your conclusion about that was. I thought under the new plan, the sidewalk was going to stay level with where it was. Yet, as written, the resolution seems to be saying that you're allowing it to be raised by how much is undefined. And second, there was a lot of discussion about the bicycle racks, and this is saying the applicant is paying six thousand to move them in those odd conditions that now seem irrelevant, number thirty-four and thirty-five. It was saying all the racks were going to be moved, but section two in the staff report, I think, are indicating a portion of them. It would be good, again, in the interest of clarity, to say how many are remaining and how many are being moved. And then finally, in the interest of clarity, the very first condition of approval, which is standard in all these things, is saying the approval is, is conditioned on the approved site plan. But unlike when things go to the planning commission, there's no longer a site plan connected to the resolution. So I'm wondering how people are going to know whether what is developed is actually conforming to that site plan or not, because it's not here for the public, the applicant, or the council to review. And I'm myself a little fuzzy on what the approved layout is. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment on this issue? Seen none, staff, do you foresee any issues that you want to address or you think need clarification before we make a motion?
Certainly, Mr. Mosher did bring up a couple of things in his written correspondence, as well as this evening, regarding condition number one, there was an error in the staff report, but not in the resolution. We are accurately identifying that the elevation of the outdoor area may be raised to match the finished floor. So that was a correction. And in regards to his other comments, I don't see any reason to not move forward.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil.
Are we moving to discussion on this item?
Yes.
Okay. I'll say, having watched this process play out, it looks like what was happening is we had the applicant go through staff, and they had a vigorous discussion, and then it went to planning commission and vigorous discussion, and we ended up with a substantial number of requirements. And then when it came to council, Councilman Piattar took the omen's work of trying to reach a resolution, which he mostly has, and it looks like the difference now standing in between full resolution is a pencil. I think, I think that's, I think that's how I understand it. And I have to say, having watched the applicant bend over backwards to accommodate the appellant's on this, and, and as well as the, the work being done at, at the dais level, I'm, I'm very much inclined to grant the six inches that the, the applicant is requesting. And so I would move the balance, I would move the recommendation, including Councilman Piattar's modifications with the inclusion of the, thank you, the modification of condition forty-one that the applicant has sought.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. I see a couple requests here in the queue. Mayor Protam Duffield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I'm very sympathetic to the gentleman neighbor, I also just cannot believe that six inches has anything to do with noise, and I know what he's, what he wants to do is reduce noise. And so I, I just can't see six inches making it any noisier. I do feel that it's a lot safer when I look at how many times people are going to be carrying things through that door. So I like to think of it on the safety side. That is a gain, it's a positive. Maybe he could give him a hundred dinners or something for, for that. I do, I do sympathize with him though, but six inches is, is not going to make it any noisier on my, in my opinion.
Councilmember Dixon.
To that point, maybe just a little bit more negotiation here. I agree with the comments that six inches is six inches. However, it says in the number thirty-six that there's going to be a noise study within three months, and then it goes, the analysis shall be considered by the planning commission at a notice public hearing. Just a lot of more, if there is a noise problem, if the six inches is granted and there's a noise problem, I, what can we do to make this modification or this protest of excessive noise out of this forty-two inch wide door? Instead of making the applicant, the residents, go through this formal planning commission, is there anything that we could do to immediately respond to a noise problem and see if we can work out some kind of a modification with the property owner?
Councilmember Dixon, it would depend on the outcome of the noise study and whether or not they could really define that it's the door that's causing the, the noise standards to be exceeded. So we would look at different operational characteristics that could be employed in order to address the noise concerns. So I, I don't think it will, the, if there will be a noise, a noise concern associated with the door, I don't think it'll matter whether it's thirty-six inches wide or forty-two inches wide. So I think we'll have to look at some other operational change that can address the noise concern, and I think we have that ability with the conditions as drafted.
Okay, well, okay, I accept that. I guess where I'm saying, just at the hurdle to make the residents go through the planning commission, can they work with staff to, to ameliorate the situation if there is indeed legitimate noise problems?
Yes, that would be, that would be our first step towards compliance.
Do we need to put that in any kind of conditional step instead of saying, because it says the analysis shall be considered by the plan at a notice public hearing to ensure compliance? Can we have a first step where they work with staff to see if they can resolve?
Sure, if I may step in. The restaurant will continue to have to maintain compliance with the city's noise ordinance, and we will continue to encourage the residents to notify us if there are any noise concerns. It's just like we do now. So if we get phone calls, we would be contacting the restaurant operator to ensure they bring down the noise levels and ensure they comply with our conditions. So that would be an ongoing dialogue that we'll be having.
All right. I know that the resident did that, and anyway, it was very frustrating. I just want to make it a user-friendly process, so if we can, that would be my wish and that condition. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Avery.
My recollection was the, during this, and it was really great, as we all know, to have that outcome where two parties left mildly satisfied or dissatisfied, but nonetheless, a resolution was, was had when it really didn't look like that was possible, given the back and forth. But in, in my view, the, the city was extraordinary in, in, and Scott Piattar was excellent, but the amount of effort that went into accomplishing basically most of what the applicant wanted in terms of outside dining was amazing to me, and I thought it was great because I think I, I like outside dining, and I think it worked out. But what I remembered about the session was is that the resident, Mr. Sullivan, was really concerned about the bass. And it, when we started, the restaurateur agreed to take the bass out and have like a four-piece band with no bass. And then in the middle of our back and forth discussion here on, at that, at that meeting, he came back up to the podium and said, you know, I've thought about this, and I'd really like the bass back in this mix. And I thought, geez, you know, that was the one thing that Mr. Sullivan complained about. And to my surprise, he came up and said he was okay with that. And so that was actually good news. But I guess I feel that we really need to take care of Mr. Sullivan here. So I agree with, with Ms. Dixon on this, that we staff, we should really be alert to, and, and not to make him, not to put an onus on the restaurateur, he's got to run his business, he needs to have entertainment, but I, I really feel like we've, we need to pay attention here going forward and make sure that we represent him if he's having issues, because I think we've got something good here. I'm, I agree, I'm okay with the forty-two inch door, but I just really want to make sure it goes well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad I could all pencil out. All right, at this time, let's call the vote.
Mayor Muldoon?
Yes.
I'm sorry, before I call, call for the question, if I could just clarify on condition forty-one, that we're taking out the reference that the width of the door could be increased pursuant to compliance with building code requirements or due to operational needs pursuant to the director's determination. From my understanding, that's being struck, and it's just going to be a forty-two inch door, period. Is that correct?
That's the maker of the motion, is that correct?
My, I, I understood it to be this, basically the slide that Ms. McDermott presented, and is that something that is a problem?
The, the slide that Ms. McDermott presented also gives the forty-two inch door the ability to be widened for operational needs or for building code needs. And so from what I understood from Mr. Piattar's comments is that he felt if it was forty-two inches wide, we would not need those two additional caveats.
Yeah, I'd prefer to just lock it in at forty-two or less per the applicant's request.
Does that require an amended motion?
That's fine. I, so let me amend my motion. I move that we approve per staff recommendation with the addition of the conditions that Mr. Piattar has put in, and the language that, we would be striking the language that staff has recommended, but insert only the phrase forty-two inches.
And that's okay with me as the second.
Thank you.
That'll be forty-two inches or less, and you won't have the language in there saying or to facilitate restaurants' operational needs as determined appropriate by the CDD.
That is correct.
Yes, I second it.
All right, let's vote.
So I, I would force a discussion and an alternate motion saying thirty-six inches to try and fight one more time for Mike, but I can count to four, so I'll avoid the pain. Thank you.
The motion carries unanimously, six-zero.
All right, so the other polled item, number nine from the consent calendar, the lease agreement for the animal sheltering services. And is there a staff report on that, or does that, will the council member polled the item like a report?
Yep, so this might be a, a short discussion, but, so the reason that I polled item number nine is to have just a quick discussion on what the ramifications are of voting on an extension of the lease, because first off, we clearly need an animal shelter, and this animal shelter is working. But the problem, as I read the staff report, is that our landlord right now is going to be cutting back substantially on the number of hours that had been anticipated as part of the lease. And because of that, if we move forward on a three-year lease, what we're going to be doing, I believe, is effectively locking ourselves into adding another full-time employee. That's how I read the staff report, and I also read it as saying that there's essentially going to be an increase in a hundred and seventy thousand dollars on top of the sixty-six thousand dollars that we're going to be paying in rent. What I want to do is I want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly, and I also want to make sure that we've explored all the other options to avoid that scenario with the caveat that, yes, we absolutely need to have this. And I also look forward to public comment because my understanding is Mr. Stokes has been spearheading an effort to create a nonprofit that will hopefully and eventually take over the shelter and be a great partner to the city. And the question I suppose is how long that process may take, and if it is three years, then it's three years. But I wanted to make sure that, as a council, we're not voting on a lease extension without the, you know, at the, at the rate that we're talking about, without at least understanding the ramifications of doing so. So Ms. Jacobs, I'll turn it over to you to answer. I mean, if, if there's anything that I have misunderstood or, or anything along those lines, I'd love to hear it, but again, we clearly need a great animal shelter in this city, and we have some truly phenomenal volunteers, but I don't want to overtax our volunteers. So please.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Neil. Mayor Muldoon in council, my name is Carol Jacobs, I'm your assistant city manager, and I've been working closely with the police department on this subject for the last year and a half. About a year and a half ago, we had a contractor, Orange County Humane Society, in which they broke their contract, and we had to leave immediately and find another space. We were, we had a first option of purchasing some property and, and building our own. The council at the time did not like that idea so much, and they asked us to come back and find a different solution. We came up with what we thought was a, was a good solution. We found up in the Santa Ana Heights area a, a new animal sanctuary, which provided for kind of a third rescue for animals, and they were a startup. So they were brand-new in the business, they weren't sure of what they were doing, we weren't sure what we were doing because we had never really run this model before. We formed a partnership in which, for sixty thousand dollars a year, we, we rented some kennel space, and they provided the staffing. We quickly got into the situation, and they did provide staffing, but we had a cadre of animal volunteers who wanted to help us as well. So our animal control staff has about fourteen, fourteen volunteers now that come in and assist the animal shelter free of charge, and we thought with the, with the leasing of the space and the volunteers that we could, we could manage the property. When we, as city staff, don't have control over not our own volunteers, but a, a third-party volunteer, we were running into some issues with the quality of individuals that they were, they were hiring, and we ran into some issues with poor behavior, I'll put it that way. We worked through those issues with the property owner, but we felt it was really important that we as staff had control over the volunteers and the staffing at that animal shelter. In addition, we felt it was important to have control over the person who lives in the home. There's a, there's a, there's a home that, it's, and it's in a home in a residential area. The person who lives in the home is the overseer for the animal sanctuary and is kind of a, the twenty-four night, night person for us. So if there's a problem with one of our animals, they can call our PD and we can come out and respond. At some time during the last year, that person was removed from the home, another person came in, created all kinds of problems. We worked with the property owner. Now the original woman is back, and that's, and now everything's fine. We looked at Irvine, we looked at Mission Viejo, we spoke with the county of Orange. The county of Orange is now building a new animal shelter in Tustin, and if you wanted to get in, it was going to cost, it was going to cost us about two million dollars upfront to help pay for the new facility, plus additional costs, which were, I think, in the couple of hundred thousand dollars a year to provide services to the community. That's just for sheltering, that did not include our animal control. So we thought that this was a good idea. As we move forward, we'd been through the RFP process with the vets, that had not worked out well. Currently, the animal control officers in our town and the volunteers have really worked together closely to make, make this work. But that, there's only so many hours in a day for our staff, and other duties, field duties are being, they're not getting as much attention maybe as they should. There needs to be some staff person oversight, with oversight over the animal shelter, managing the volunteers. We're asking for one animal control officer and two thousand hours of part-time staff. We're not asking for approval of that tonight, we are asking that, we wanted to inform you that we were going to be asking the city manager to go through the budget process with that, and he can make that decision at that point, along with all the other things that he has to decide at that point before he brings that to you. But we wanted to make you aware that we would be asking for the additional staffing in order to provide this, basically, this new service. Now, the three-year issue, and why it's three years is twofold. Number one, we've been talking with Mr. Stokes and Ms. Watt about a nonprofit, and that nonprofit, they- nonprofit, they think they need a couple of years in order to start funding for the purchase of the home, maybe long-term. And so they would purchase it and give it to the city for our animal shelter. The other thing is the property owner currently does not, has no interest in selling us the property for about three years, when her personal situation will change, and at that point, she may be willing to sell to us. So that is, that is the three-year term. If we, if we choose not to do, not to, not to renew the lease, we will, we'll figure out something else. We could always go back to Orange County Humane Society, I think, or find another vet. We've, we've kind of been down that road, so we don't believe that there's any vendors out there that would take this on. But that would be, that would be our next option. So those are kind of the, I hope I answered all your questions.
Councilwoman Dixon.
You, Ms. Jacobs. I have been out there to the animal shelter. I'm very impressed with the operation. I think the city and the staff and the volunteers that have been working, it's been kind of a, I, what do I want to say? Holding it together with a little bit of string and tape and what's so heavy. But it is very, it's clean, it's immaculate. And just as I, we all may see, if we're on the Newport Beach website, on Facebook, the adoptions that happened. You didn't put those statistics in the staff report, but it's been very positive what the staff has been doing, and I commend you for your, your good work. I also want to commend Mr. Stokes and your, your group of volunteers that are tirelessly working on behalf of our four-legged friends and in our community. And I'm looking forward to the organization, the nonprofit, getting up and getting organized. What I hope, I mean, it's still a lot of unknowns. They have, they're in a state of organization, as I understand it, that we'll see a goal, a financial goal, a fundraising goal, and how you structurally are going to be participating with the city. I think that is an unknown. So I'm willing to let it, let's continue on for three years. Unrelated to the animal issues, I just have a high guard up to headcount control or headcount additions, FTE additions. So I look forward to Mr. Kiff looking to find ways under some rock somewhere that we can find an extra FTE that can, portion of which can be allocated to support our animal control and services function. I hope we can do that without increasing our head, total headcount numbers. So thank you, Ms. Jacobs, and thank you, volunteers, for working together and coming together with a solution. And, and I look forward to the budget discussion as well. Thank you.
Mayor Muldoon, if I may make a clarification, I apologize. It's a, it's a five-year contract, not a three-year.
Do we want to change it to a three?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry. I thought it was a three-year with two-year option, two-one-year options.
We're just, sorry.
Yeah, that's one issue we just, we're looking at, because the initial term in the lease was prepared as five years with two-one-year options. So we're looking at that to see whether it should be changed to three with two-one-year options.
We could certainly go three and two if the council's more comfortable with that.
So that's staff recommendation, three with two. I move staff recommendation.
Agree with two-one-year options, yeah.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion, a second. We have public comment.
Tim Soak, Santa Ana Heights. I just wanted to clarify for Mr. Councilman O'Neill. The private-public partnership that we're trying to create with a nonprofit foundation is not to take over the facility, but to leave policy and, and those issues with the city. We're just trying to create foundations. It's very, very typical in our, our community. Friends of Oasis, Friends of the Library, we're using that format to, to create another Friends of sort of thing. So you're, the city is very familiar with those types of organizations. So it's, and it's not a policy organization. It's just we supplement programming for, for the foundation. I, tonight, I'd just like to thank, during the summer, Councilman, or Mayor, Mayor Dixon at that time, encouraged us to start this role with Gene and myself and Barbara Venetia, some other forward-thinking people in, in the animal community. So thank you for that. Also, Carol and, and City Manager Dave, and of course Lieutenant Fishbacher, who's always our, our champion on a lot of issues. We thank you guys for bringing this to, to the public. It's a much-needed sort of thing. Again, we're trying to not create anomaly and create something else that's different for the city, but very similar to what Friends of Oasis and those types of things. When we, you know, West Santa Ana Heights is actually the newest part of Newport Beach. We just annexed in 2008, Dave, was it? Or 2000? So it was an area that already had dog kennels in it, so we preserved that when we annexed the, that side after the, the east side with the equestrian area. So it made a lot of sense to, to have this type of facility and in that area too. It's already, already zoned up there, so people didn't have objection to it since it was already there. And I think this just strengthens, strengthens that, that, that community up there within the dog community, especially Tusson Avenue, with there's multiple dog kennel facilities where people do take their most precious pet and board them. As, as you see, there's a lot of even, hey, Newport Beach even has an editorial with Stasha and Tom Johnson's new Newport News that, so we're so popular with this, this pet issue. It's even got its own editorial and stuff. So I just encourage, again, to, as, as Councilman Dixon said, Dave, look under a different rock to find a different, a position for us for that, so it's full-time and dedicated. I think that's very strong. We need someone that actually is there that knows what they're doing, and it's not a simple volunteer-type position, but we need a dedicated position. So we encourage everyone to, it's very supported. We're, we're having problems not taking money in right now, because we're not, or don't have our paperwork in. So it's very supported within our community funding. So I think it's going to be very successful, like the other two organizations that I mentioned. So thanks tonight for your vote.
Yes, just a quick question. So do you want to just update on the status of the organization of the nonprofit?
Yeah, we're currently having our, our legal team do that, that process. We, we slowed that process down so we could tag with this, so it, we had something to support. If, if we weren't going to get an, an extension up there, that we would have to maybe create something else, or there wouldn't be as much interest from our, our, our local residents of Newport Beach. You kind of see that we've already created a logo. Some of those things are going to change and stuff, so we're still working on that. But we, we created, tried to create an identity for the, the nonprofit as well. So we're underway. And again, we're, we're having such people come into the community and want to participate in this, we're having to slow people down and stuff to, for not, not collecting funds right now too, for the facility.
Your team and Gene and you and, and all that, it's great.
Well, city staff too.
And staff.
Great, great team. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. The question tonight is the lease. And like Councilmember O'Neill, I was trying to decipher the table that is on page nine dash three. And just looking at it on the face of things, it appears to be telling us that we're currently paying $60,000 a year for a lease, which is providing us presumably with some property. The staff report is a little unclear on that. And about 10 hours per week of help or service that we're getting in return for the $60,000. And for the next five years, we're being asked, apparently by the property owner, to pay $66,000 for leasing something, but with no service at all provided in connection with the $66,000. And I think it would be helpful for me and perhaps for the council, if we understood, for that $66,000, are we leasing more property than we were for the $60,000 that we're paying now? It sounds like maybe we're leasing the entire house or additional something. Otherwise, it's curious that we're paying more for less. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Is it a rate increase, or are we getting more square footage?
Mayor Muldoon, we're getting more square footage there. They're closing off a couple of bedrooms, which is going to allow us an opportunity to have a quarantine area and a greeting area for, for people right now. Right now, there is, there is none of that.
Right. Thank you. Any other public comments? I don't, all right, seen none. Back to the councils. Are there any discussion? Is there a motion? You made the motion? And that motion incorporates three, three years with two-five, two-one-year options? Okay, thank you. Let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously 7-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Public comments on non-agenda items. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Any public comments on non-agenda items?
Mayor Muldoon and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. I, I see that our lovely city clerk's office is celebrating Valentine's Day tonight, and I appreciate their wish to be somewhere else other than here, as I think some of you have expressed also. And in that connection, I just wanted to commend them on redoubling their effort and being very conscientious about posting the written comments that are submitted in advance of the council meeting online, at least the ones that are submitted by 5:00 on Monday, so that people can read them online and do not have to come here to the lobby to see what those comments were. I think that's very helpful. I commend them for doing that and hope they will keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, seen no more oral reports? Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Yes. Please come forward. Excuse me, I didn't see you.
Thank you for the opportunity to address this. My name is Tim Liedem. I've been a resident of Balboa Island for over 25 years. And I'm a former aide to the governor and lieutenant governor of Hawaii, involved in many environmental issues. The thing that I want to address, just over the last four or five weeks, I've taken over 30, 35 birds off the shore of Balboa Island. And I've had response from several councilmen, which I appreciate. John Kepler has been very, very helpful. We're working with, excuse me, Coastkeeper, and also Surf Rider, and also the Wetlands. And the issue here is that the, these birds represent something. And it's gotten a lot less healthy in our bay. And we realize that there are many issues. You know, we've got planes going over. We've got suddenly groundwater coming in from El Toro Base, as a lot of the munitions from World War II are degenerating. So I think the next step is that a lot of these groups are going to petition the city council to take a real hard comparative look at the condition, the condition of our bay. Right now, there is not a comprehensive study or statistics on bacteria, the copper from the bottom of the boats. And I think everyone wants to get a solution. I don't think there's a, a white hat and a black hat here, but it's going to take a real concentration of efforts by the community. And, and as we realize, our bay is very, very important to us. If this ever gets polluted, it's not a tree hugger issue, it's economics. If suddenly the condition of our bay goes down, if we have a lot of animals getting sick, if we have children getting sick, well, it's tough to close the, close the door on something like that. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other speakers? I see people thinking about it now. Okay. Right. Oral reports from city council on committee activities. Councilman O'Neill?
None.
Councilman Piattar?
None.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes, I have two. Tomorrow afternoon, 4:00 p.m., the Balboa Village Advisory Committee will be meeting at Marina Park. And there'll be an update on the shuttle, the Balboa Peninsula Shuttle. So look forward to that. And on Thursday, the Finance Committee will be meeting at 3:00 p.m. in the Crystal Cove Conference Room. And again, I'll make a plea to all interested and non-interested people in our finances. I think you'll find it highly interesting as we begin discussions we heard today on the facility's financial plan. We'll be talking about that and, and coming to some recommendations that will come back to council. We'll be talking about our work plan for the year. We'll be talking about pensions and some preliminary discussions on, on budget forecasting or budget forecasting plans. So a lot of exciting finance issues. Look forward to having the residents attend. It's highly interesting. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Herdman?
On Friday of this week, the Balboa Island Merchants Association has formed an ad hoc committee to begin looking at, to begin brainstorming ideas on the refurbishment of Marine Avenue on Balboa Island. So I'll be attending that meeting, 8:30 in the morning.
Councilman Avery?
None.
Mayor Proton Duffield?
I have none.
All right, moving on to current business. Staff?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, we have a report in regard to a project we're going to take off and start on 15th Avenue, or 15th Street, excuse me. Mark Vukoyevich, our deputy director, will give that report tonight.
Thank you, Dave. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I have a brief presentation for you. Again, my name is Mark Vukoyevich. I'm the Deputy Public Works Director and City Engineer. So parents, students, and others in the Newport Heights community have come to us asking for ways to improve pedestrian and bike traffic, especially in regards to Newport Heights Elementary School. One of those requests was to add sidewalk along the south side of 15th Street between Irvine and Santa Ana. So Public Works is currently, as you may know, preparing to advertise the Newport Heights Alley Project right now, which is, would be immediately adjacent to this. And so taking this recent feedback regarding the sidewalk request, we were coming to you for your consideration about adding these sidewalks and incorporating them into our alley project. In your attachments, you have the proposed sidewalks. You may note that there's no, no design work, no engineering work has been done. In other words, the details have not been figured out. The difficult part about this project has to do with the impact it causes on trees. When you put in sidewalk, if there's trees are there, then that's where the impact is. And in this case, we, we have about 35 trees that are affected, and about 16 of those are what are called special trees or significant trees. And the sidewalk cannot be completed unless they are removed. Typically, this would be under the purview of the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission. But ultimately, since the sidewalk is at question, we felt it was appropriate to come to council directly. We mailed notices to 16 property owners, or hand-delivered notices to 16 property owners. I've spoken to about six of them. I've also spoken to the school principals for Ensign and Newport Heights Elementary. There is general support for the project. Everyone would like to know details and connections and things like that, too. And our recommendation is to, is for you to review this concept and provide us direction about the concept. Wave Council Policy G1, which talks about the tree removals in the public right-of-way. Direct us to work with Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission on replacement trees and bring back a budget amendment, because this is unfunded, unbudgeted project at this time. And then incorporate the sidewalk into the upcoming Newport Heights Concrete Alley Project. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the dais? Yes, Mr. Piattar?
Mark, there are certain areas where you've got shown as far as where the sidewalk would go. It looks like the city owns the right-of-way, but they only own four feet from face of curb or something around there. But there were a couple of homeowners that developed and, and put sidewalks, you know, between four and seven feet away from the curb and left a parkway against the, the curb. Does that mean we're going to go yank out those trees that they put in and put the sidewalk in if the homeowner's willing to work with us and maybe give us easements if we don't have right-of-way rights and keep that sidewalk away from the curb? Is that something that we can work into the final plans?
Yes. And to answer your question more completely, we have right-of-way that varies from nine feet to 12 feet behind the curb. So we have, we have plenty of city right-of-way there. There are 16 properties, five or six of them. There are 16 properties, five or six of them already have sidewalks. Some of those may need modification, some of them we may be able to keep, but we'll work with those property owners and try to value-engineer the best project possible.
And work with them as far as, I mean, I kind of like the idea, they set there, put the sidewalk in, you've got trees that are then between the sidewalk and the curb, and it looks really nice. On the other hand, it's got to be functional. It's got to be, what, a four-foot sidewalk and no obstructions in the concrete and things like that. But I just want to make sure you're going to work with those guys in those situations. Thank you.
Any more questions from the dice? All right, let's go to the public. Comments, please. Yes. Yes, please come forward. How are you? Just state your name for the record.
Yeah, my name is Murphy McCann. I'm the father of Brock McCann. I brought a picture of him. He's probably the reason why we're all here today, talking about this. And what I can, what I'd like to say is that I really appreciate the movement on this. And at the same time, I'd like to point out that the problem really is here and now. The traffic, the foot traffic and car traffic that happens simultaneously on these streets between the high school, Enson and Heights is, it is, it is still really severe. If you have a chance to drive it, you know, during school hour, you know, during drop-off or, you know, pickup, it, you know, there's kids all over the place. They absolutely need a place to go where they're not in harm's way. So I, you know, I trust that out of the work that you guys have done, that you've determined that a sidewalk on one side of the street is, you know, is, is the best possible route. And all I can do is urge you to get it done as quickly as possible, because the problem is here and now. I'd also like to say that I think that there's more that can be done, and, you know, whether it's work with the schools on, on timing of drop-off and let-off, or the, or the timing of the trash routes, or development of a full sidewalk on the other side of 15th, as well as the other streets, you know, I really urge you to look at all those things. Like I said, the problem is enormous and, you know, so, thank you. There actually for the, you know, just in case you're wondering there, or didn't already know, there have been two accidents involving teenagers, I believe, students in front of the high school in the last three weeks. I think that statistic is, is just, it's downright frightening. There have been others since Brock has passed. You know, none to the result that happened in his case, but this is critical. And the more you can do about it, the sooner the better. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for having the courage, taking the time.
Mr. Mayor? Maybe staff can address, schedule-wise, what we're looking at for the sidewalk. Yes, we would move very quickly to start the design. We've already started the surveying. It'll take us a few months to get this out to bid and be in construction. It's going to be towards the end of the school year and through, through summer, but it'll be done before the next school season.
Yes, Councilwoman Dixon?
Just to follow up on Mr. McCann's comments on what else can be done, the trash collection and anything else like that, or has anything been modified? Are we still looking at other areas?
We have, yes, Councilmember Dixon, there are some times, as I understand it, when the trash trucks are still out there at the wrong time, but we did change their routes and their times. We'll continue to work with a little task force that we pulled together that includes Gina from, who's a representative of McCann's family. So we're just kind of going down the list of what we can do, and this is certainly right at the top. We continue to work with the school, too, but there's always more that can be done.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Right, let's vote.
Mayor, mayor, excuse me, real quick, if I could just clarify that this project also includes a piece of sidewalk along Cliff Drive in front of Enson School as well, too. That's in your staff report.
Thank you.
On the opposite side of the street from the school, too, right?
In front of the school.
Along the front of the school. But it's on the west side instead of the east side?
There's a development going on on the opposite side of the house. They're going to be putting that sidewalk in, and then we're going to do in front of the school that connects the sidewalk on Irvine around the corner.
Okay, got you.
Motion carries unanimously, seven zero. Motion for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider the vote on, vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions to reconsider from the dice? Seeing none. This evening, we're going to adjourn in the memory of Chip Donnelly and Ralph Rodheim, and Mayor Proton Duffield will be reading the memorial for Chip Donnelly.
Thank you, Mayor. Newport Beach resident Chip Donnelly passed away February 1st. Chip was born and raised in Los Angeles, graduated Harvard School, and went on to attend the University of Los Angeles. Chip developed his skills as a yachtsman early on. Just after high school, he accompanied his family on a two-year voyage to the South Pacific on their 42-foot sailboat. He served as his father's right-hand man and learned how to navigate the seas. After graduating from UCLA and spending some time in the banking world, Chip moved to Newport Beach and continued to pursue his passion for the sea and sailing. He established himself as a web designer and skippered yacht deliveries to Mexico, Hawaii, and Fiji. Chip lived aboard his yacht, moored at the Newport Harbor Yacht Club mooring field for the last eight years. He was an active member of the club and very well-liked by all, and served on the Board of Directors of the Newport Mooring Association. Chip was expert in a broad range of harbor and boat-related issues and generously shared his knowledge and talents. He was a member of the Harbor Commission Subcommittee on the Mooring Alignment and Administration, which I was chairman of, and Skip never missed a meeting over the six long years we met. He also rarely, if ever, missed a Harbor Commission meeting for the 10 years I was on it. And he also served as an editorial advisor for the city's Guide to Newport Harbor. Chip is survived by his mother Susan, brother Douglas, two sisters, and extended family. In little flowers, memorial donations may be made to the Newport Harbor Sailing Foundation.
Thank you, Councilman, Mayor Proton Duffield. And then Councilwoman Dixon will be reading the memorial for Ralph Rodheim.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Balboa Island resident and former harbor commissioner Ralph Rodheim passed away on February 6th. Ralph was born and raised in Newport Beach, graduated from Newport Harbor High School, and went on to graduate from Chapman University. Ralph was founder of the Rodheim Marketing Group, and Ralph and his wife Penny owned Balboa Boat Rentals and the Fun Zone for more than two and a half decades. Ralph devoted countless hours to community and civic service and tirelessly supported his hometown. He helped to organize a number of local events, including the Newport to Ensonada Boat Race, the Newport Beach Christmas Boat Parade, and the Wood and Boat Festival. He was a member of the Balboa Yacht Club and served as chair of its Governor's Cup event in 2012. An avid boater, Ralph served on the city's Harbor Commission from its inception in 2002 until 2013. During the 1980s, he served on the California Boating and Waterways Commission and was named its chair in 1988. Also a champion of local business, Ralph became a member of the Commodores Club of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce in 1986 and served a term as the club skipper. He served as president of the Balboa Village Business Improvement District and was later active in the Balboa Village Merchants Association. In fact, two weeks ago, we celebrated the raising of the Balboa Village sign, welcome sign, archway sign, and I was so pleased to, Councilmember Duffield and Mr. Avery were there, to salute Ralph, who was there, and that was his fervent wish for years, to see that archway sign installed, and it came just in time. Newport Beach Chamber name, the Chamber of Commerce named Ralph its Citizen of the Year in 2010. Diagnosed with ALS, Lewyck-Ehrig's Disease, in 2014, Ralph continued to attend business and community events. He attended the Balboa Village Gateway Sign dedication just a few weeks ago. He is survived by his wife Penny, and a celebration of his life will be held this Sunday, February 19th, from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM at the Harborside Restaurant at the Balboa Pavilion. In little flowers, donations can be made to the ALS Therapy Development Institute at ALS.net. Thank you.
Mayor adjourned. Thank you.